Kunchakembar Council Meeting duly open and ready to conduct the business before it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Leonard. This evening, we are here to present the draft 2023 fiscal year budget. We will specifically be focusing on 2023 capital lists per department, and additionally, the general fund expenditures, specifically anything that's above a 3% increase from the previous fiscal year. Just to go over a brief overview of what's in your packets this evening in front of you, you have a statement of revenue and expenditures that is year-to-date as of September 22nd, 2022. You have the draft proposed 2023 revenues, general fund revenues and expenditures. So as the directors are going through their line items, you'll be referring to this packet. There are page numbers, one through five is the general fund revenues, and then we switch to general fund expenditures, six through 21. Good? And then the last two items are the cover sheets per department for the capital request. So again, each department director will be presenting each item. At the end of all the presentations, we'll bring up the master Excel sheet that has the funding sources available for your capital moving into 2023, and we'll run through the exercise of selecting which items we will fund for the 2023 cycle. And then the last item, again, is a PDF version of what that capital Excel sheet will look like that will go up on the screens for anyone in the audience and the recording of this budget work session. Our budget schedule moving forward after tonight, we will review any feedback from council that we receive from our meeting and make any necessary changes to the proposed budget over the course of October. Department directors will work on budget narratives, goals and priorities for 2023. And then I will be back in front of you in November, on November 2nd, for a special budget presentation, and that will actually be the full proposed 2023 budget. At that point, it will then be on your November 16th agenda for a vote to advertise the budget and your tax levy ordinance. And then on December 21st, you will formally vote to approve the budget and the tax levy ordinance. So that is the full budget cycle coming to fruition and concluding in 2022 in preparation for 2023. Are there any questions in terms of materials you have in front of you scheduled for this evening or scheduled moving forward? Okay, just a very general overview before we move into our directors. Your forecasted revenues and expenditures without transfers into our reserve funds for 2023 is approximately $14,545,810. And your expenditures without transfers, again, are approximately $14,510,851. On an annual basis, we put $500,000 towards your OPEB fund, which is your post-employment benefit fund, which sits in a trust. So that means that you basically cannot use it for annual operating purposes. It's reserved specifically for that purpose. And then you also, on an annual basis, budget $500,000 to go into your capital reserve fund. Those dollars sit in your capital reserve fund to either fund your capital budget or to fund emergencies in terms of operations that come up over the course of the fiscal year. Once you factor in those transfers, we will be presenting to you a budget that is approximately $15,510,851. The fund balance needed, meaning the fund balance from your general fund, basically your cash reserve, is approximately $965,041. I can tell you that annually, year after year, that continues to decrease. The majority of the fiscal years end with you having a surplus in your revenues, so you don't even need to utilize your fund balance. Questions on that? And then on an annual basis, we have stuck with a procedure of presenting you a budget that falls within the range of the national inflation rate. So historically, prior to 2022, that has fluctuated between the two, roughly the two, in the 4% range. We're in an unprecedented time. You're looking at a national inflation range of approximately 8.3% to 9.1%. If you look over the course of the last couple of months, I don't know where that's going to land at the end of the year. We'll continue to monitor it, but we will be presenting to you a budget that is within that range. Right now, it's roughly 8.96% increase, and that will change slightly based off of some items that are not definite as of today, such as your healthcare renewal, which will get closer towards the middle of October. That's a general overview. The borough fortunately is in a very strong position financially. Your estimated cash position at the end of 2022 is strong. You're looking at around the $20 million range. So moving into your 2023 budget, your strategic decisions up until this point have placed you in a position where thankfully, the budget I am presenting to you this evening will not require a tax increase moving into 2023 to cover all of the expenditures that we will be discussing this evening. So kudos to all of you. And I think that's important to note because we are going to be specifically looking at the 30, and factoring into everything we decide, the 35% population increase that we're expecting over the course of the last 18 months. And it's important to note that there were very strategic decisions made so that when we had to look at our overall services and the quality of service that we provide on a daily basis to our residents, constituents, businesses, et cetera, we knew that we were going to need to increase the number of services we provide, the number of personnel that we needed in order to handle that influx of population that was coming. We had COVID to deal with, we had inflation, economic recession. The last three to four years have been very tumultuous. We were in a position thankfully where we are able to implement those necessary services that we know we're going to need, that are going to have a direct increase in the budget without having to have any financial burden on the residents. So again, we are presenting everything we've discussed up to the point this year. Additional personnel, increases in certain areas of operation as it relates to services that's going to result in an increase with no tax increase because of strategic decisions you've made up to this point. So that's my general overview of the budget before we kind of move into department directors. Any questions or concerns before we move on? Great. So first up this evening is Angela Metz. Angela will be covering administrative services. Angela does not have any capital items for consideration this evening, so we specifically will be moving into your general fund expenditures. If you'd like to follow along, you have the packets in front of you. You also have rulers and page numbers if you want to find the line item and so that you can reference which line item she's discussing.
Okay, hello. So I have just a couple of line items, and they would be on pages seven and eight. The first one is 042215, and I'm just going to add in 406215 because they are both for postage. Postage line items have increased due to the increase in postage. Two increases are expected per year starting in 2023. The next line item is 402317. Finance and HR software maintenance increased by almost 50%. There are a couple of reasons for this increase. In August, we migrated our finance software to be cloud-based. This eliminates server dependency, adds another layer of security, while also allowing off-site users better access. In October of 2021, the borough implemented the use of credit card payments online. The yearly cost for both upgrades has been added to this line item of the 2023 budget along with payroll processing increases. Any questions on that one? The next item is 402321, teledata. This line item has a phone that was purchased in case of emergencies or work at home during COVID, so we are still holding on to those. Account number 01407264. We added three computers that were on our depreciation list marked for replacement in 2023. Account number 407420, subscriptions and memberships. That line item was underbudgeted in 2022, so we are catching up in 2023. 407452, IT professional services. We had a retainer increase from our vendor for the first time in several years. 407453 is the web design. It's budgeted with an estimated increase. We're waiting on the final numbers for that. Any questions? An admin?
So you mentioned the web vendors or the, sorry, the IT vendors?
Yes.
Have we shopped around or considered other vendors? Or is there a reason that we prefer them even with the cost increase?
Well, we do, we have a contract with them.
Okay.
And so when their contract is up, we evaluate that.
Okay.
And I don't know the date of the contract right now.
We will, on a regular basis, look at all of our service providers and look at potentially issuing an RFP to determine if it's the time to shop around for new vendors. Considering the level of work that our IT vendor implemented, especially kind of on the spot through COVID, and then with everything that came this year in terms of cybersecurity, there was a whole influx of additional requirements from our liability provider that we needed to have in order to ensure we could continue to have cyber coverage. Our IT vendor was all over it, was immediately responsive, worked directly with our liability provider to ensure that we were compliant. They just finished the renewal, a very lengthy and extensive renewal that we're now required from our cyber provider in order to continue coverage moving into 2023, and that was confirmed. We are also working collaboratively with the sewer authority as we potentially migrate administrative offices into this building. So you're kind of doing one-stop shopping for all borough residents and constituents. So I would say, given, regardless of their contract that's in place, they've been instrumental in kind of making sure that we were up and operating through a lot of tumultuous times and are currently working on a lot of different projects that are time-sensitive, or we wouldn't really want to divert from the services they're currently providing. So right now, the intent is to retain them. And then I would say that there is always the potential that there is a better provider out there, but what we have right now is meeting our needs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thanks, Angela. Okay, I'm going to fill in for, while we wait for Lauren Irazari, who is next up on the list. I'm going to continue with some budget highlights so that we can fill the gaps. In terms of personnel that we had conversations with leading up to this year, I just want to make sure it's very clear that in your budget that's being presented to you this evening, you have six additional FTEs that are built into the numbers. So that will be a lieutenant in the police department, a code officer in the licensing and inspections department, two laborers in our public services department, an administrative assistant with additional HR functions in the administrative offices, and a full-time firefighter. In addition to that, we will also have in addition of a part-time firefighter. So earlier this year, you had your emergency service personnel, along with Norberth Ambulance, all present to you what their needs would be with a proposed 35% population increase. And those specific needs that were discussed in their presentation, you now have the numbers in front of you in terms of what that looks like. Any questions on personnel? And understand too, when you're talking about personnel, you're not just talking about base salary. You factor in healthcare workers' comp, life insurance, disability, Medicare, social security, all the costs that go along with each FTE that's applicable. In your personnel budget are also all of your APSME contract stipulations and your police union contract stipulations. We, as a basis for all of our decisions, are aligned with the Montgomery County HR Consortium. It keeps us competitive, it helps us retain talent, and also enables us to encourage professional development in the future. Overall, your personnel budget increase that you're looking at is approximately $1.1 million. And overall, in terms of an operational increase, you're looking at approximately $175,000. So you can keep that in mind as you work through your general fund expenditures. Any questions on personnel? Okay. Lauren, welcome. And you want to step up?
Sure. Steph, Lauren, I'm ready. The personnel budget that we have
Yes.
is in national benchmarks of the employee expense versus operating expense?
Yes. National benchmarks, also county benchmarks. When you look at our operating budget compared to other municipal operating budgets. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I just want to make sure we're still within that.
All of our, yeah, so all of our positions are within ranges that are applicable to respective positions within the county, which some are high, some are towards the higher of the range, but we're within the range. And that allows, gives us the opportunity basically to keep our organizational structure, which is important when you're looking at overall management for operations. You're welcome.
Steph, and the increase in personnel is, basically, most of it is due to the increase in development and population also, and the needs for that.
I think that when you're talking about the personnel increase, we're talking about the 35% population increase that is forecasted. You're also looking at it from an overall public safety initiative. So yes, we've evaluated the current needs for the borough, but we've also evaluated the future needs for the borough. We've discussed those personnel increases over the course of the last three years, but where we were in terms of evaluating our revenues, if we had done those increases at that time, you most likely would have had to cover it through a tax increase or a cut in services somewhere, or a cut in capital initiatives. We're recommending implementation of that now because you have the revenues coming in to cover the cost of what you need to service that new section of the population. In addition to the other amenities you're adding in order to provide those services
To all the residents.
to the full borough complement.
That's what I just wanted to make clear, that it was for both.
Yeah, it's both. It's a strategic decision to add the services and the personnel that you need without having to raise taxes, which would be a financial burden on a resident.
I think we all did a great job getting there.
I think it's impressive that you're able to roll it out the way you're rolling it out. Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Lauren.
That's okay, no problem. Good evening, everyone. So we'll go through my capital budget items that I have requested. First is the A Field scoreboard. You can tell just looking by it, it's outdated. It's an eyesore up there. It's definitely overdue to be replaced. We have had many rentals the past few football seasons. With this season being the most rented, we have every weekend booked except for one in September and one in October. So the A Field is being used. It's no longer just sitting there, so it's time to update a few things up there. You know, a few years ago, the wall was done and fixed, and I think this is something that we can work on to update for our rentals that are coming in. Along with it being used for football season, we also have rugby that uses it. A frisbee organization has used it in the past. I'm not sure if they will, you know, be back next year, but it is well-used up there.
That's great.
Lauren, what's, oh, sorry.
Do our rentals cover the expense of the A Field for the most part?
I definitely would have to pull those numbers. We did some of it in previous years. And I know that Ray had purchased, you know, a cover for it, which at that time, our rentals were. We have, you know, Chestnut Hill who pays to use it, our other football rentals between Roman, Lansdale Catholic this year, Carroll. Like I said, our rugby, I do think that it's very close for our expenses. We also have Hayday Athletic that uses it weekly from March until September. And, oh, I'm sorry, March until November. So we get a good amount of rental income from them alone. So in looking at a financial analysis of the A Field in terms of revenues coming in and expenditures going out, doing an actual financial analysis of those numbers, it has been discussed. We have had, we did not feel, Lauren and I had this conversation a couple, probably about a month ago, in terms of moving and preparing for 2023. Timing is important if you're looking at raising costs to utilize the field. We were in an environment where we had to recover as a community after COVID and encourage use. I think we're at a point right now where we're pretty much booked at the A Field. We've reached a capacity in terms of usage compared to the amount of work that goes into having to prep the field, maintain the field. So a price increase for use of the A Field and B Field, and Suck Cliff Park for that matter, is coming. But just like we did with other items, making those increases, we had to look at kind of the global picture of one that would be appropriate, just like we've done with the community center relative to memberships. At this point, it was more important for us to get our community out back, utilizing some of our facilities as opposed to looking at it from a strictly financial basis. But Tina, to your point, I think probably doing that financial analysis, especially when we're starting to talk about prices and evaluating what the costs are, is important.
I'm just thinking, since the word on the street is we've got great fields and people are not coming from afar, that it would be beneficial to us
Yes.
to have them help support the cost.
Yeah. It's also important, when you think of it, from a component of being able to provide that facility at no cost to our community groups. So our youth groups and some of our, what we call lifetime groups, utilize our facilities at no cost. And that's important to continue to offer. So we have to make sure that we're outweighing that offer with someone who's coming in and paying to utilize the facility. We have increased our private users who utilize the facilities like Chestnut Hill and Roman and Carroll. That increase did happen this year slightly, but moving forward, we'll evaluate any future increases.
Lauren, are there problems with this on at all?
Sometimes it doesn't work properly. It takes a while to come on. Friday night, I got a call from my staff member up there at a game. Hey, it's not coming on. Had to do a little
Benagling?
Yeah. So I, you know, had to have them do a few things on the actual remote to get it to work.
Have you looked at options for a new scoreboard?
I mean, we have gotten a price on it.
What I'm interested in is if, well, not only if a new one should absolutely help with maintenance costs and those sorts of issues, but if it could be like energy efficient, because I would assume that something this old sucks up a lot of energy too.
Yeah, that's something I can definitely look into. The cost that we did get does include LED lights, so.
Thanks.
Do you want to move on to the next?
Okay. My next item is the multipurpose room floor in the community center. This is something we had discussed years ago, and it's on my list again. As you can see, this is literally coming up at the seams. This isn't just the only one, but you can't tell from the other pictures. It's happening in multiple spots. The floor basically has reached its lifespan. Vinyl floors like this are about 20 to 23 years lifespan, and it is definitely at that. I had another company come in that I had come in then previously, who just did, Phoenixville Recreation got a new recreation center, so she recommended this company, Abacus Sports. I went up there to see their floor, and I'm going to make my recommendation to be the same type of floor that they had. So I did give two options. In terms of cost, there's not much difference. But I will, I'm going to, can you pass these around? So if you look at the names, the two smaller ones are the Polastic Sports Flooring, so I'll go over that first. That is not a vinyl floor like the one that is in now. It is something different. It consists of a few layers. As you can see on those samples, there's a rubber base pad, then three synthetic layers poured onto a sub-layer to create a seal, then a thin second layer applied to prepare the floor for a thicker self-leveling layer to provide strength. Then a top layer is applied over the base layer using the same material. And then finally, the color that matches the final color of the flooring that we would pick. Okay? So those are just two samples. The thickness will be in between those samples. He didn't have a sample on him. So the blue one is thinner, and then the, I believe it's a sand color, is thicker. So it would be something in between them. Okay? There is a 25-year warranty that is included with those floors. So if something goes wrong, you know, it would be, I mean, certain things would be covered under that warranty. It does not include lines and markings. So as you know, the multipurpose room floor is just what it is, multipurpose. We have rentals in there. We also have rentals for birthday parties, baby showers, bridal showers. We have events in there. And then we also have, I had started, I needed another room, so I had started programming in there. We ran a basketball clinic in the fall. I'm not sure that I want to put lines on that floor though because it does not include the lines, the cost, so that would be an added cost. But because of the rentals that we do have, I'm a little nervous putting lines down. We didn't need it for the clinic. We did without it, and the Moore Brothers, they ran the clinic for us and did a great job without it. So again, that doesn't include the lines, but
Lauren, did they ask about getting lines on it at all when they?
No one has asked, no.
Okay.
No. Most people that, you know, come in, I tell them there's not lines, and they're like, okay, we'll use it anyway, you know? But again, it's very used, so I don't have a lot of time in there.
Right.
The weekends are our biggest time for rentals. And so then the other floor is the vinyl floor that's similar to what is down now. It looks, this is It looks, this is their most popular model, that, that sample. It looks like a wood floor. It's not, but it will look like it, but it will still have seams. So the Pulaski, the Polastic Sports Flooring is a seamless floor.
Okay.
Okay? So the material, the, the liquid basically, that the seal that goes over
Right.
is just poured and set, okay? Again, that vinyl, the vinyl flooring, only a 20 to 23-year lifespan. So you do get, you know, it doesn't come with a 25-year warranty as well, okay? Any questions on the flooring?
All right, sorry, can you list off a couple of the rentals for the multipurpose room over the past year? Like how has it been used?
We have rentals every weekend. Again, it's not, organizations don't normally rent it for weeks at a time. We have birthday parties, we have bridal showers, we have baby showers. We have events in there, so our pumpkin painting, our winter wonderland, all of our luncheons are in this room. We have programs such as purposeful play in there. We have a Tiny Tots open play that we started back up. We have basketball clinics in there. Theater classes. I mean, you name it, it's in there.
You have, you have open time too, right?
We do. That's, it is limited for open time, but.
It's available for them.
If I don't have a pro, there are basketball nets in there. So it's an auxiliary gym as well. So if a program or a league is going on in our main gym, then the kids who are members or the adults who are members, mostly it's kids who, who use that room.
Well, there's also 80-plus seniors that come every Monday to play bingo, so.
Yes. Let's not forget bingo.
80-plus.
Thank you.
All right, so it's, it's heavily used. And I, from, you know, everything that I've read about the Polastic Sports Flooring, it can withhold, withstand chairs and tables, so. This is the scores table. I mean, if you look at it, you can see why I want to replace it. It's old, apparently it was constructed in the 90s for the fellowship house. And it falls apart when we move it. We do have to move it quite a few times for certain things that are going on, so. That would include the base and then the table. Any questions on that?
Would you put it in the same spot?
Uh, we would. It's the best for seeing the games that are going on, especially for our tournaments.
So it would be stationary and not mobile?
No, it's mobile.
Oh, it is mobile.
That's mobile. The new one that we purchased will be mobile. And it'll actually be able to, the one that I looked at, fold up and be put in storage when needed. That cannot be.
You could tell by the carpet?
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. This has been a previous request of mine as well. It was in last year's budget, but due to the increase, the significant increase that happened when we have gotten the, the quote the year prior, we weren't able to get it done. So it has gone back in our budget. Again, this is Aubrey Collins Basketball Courts. You can see the cracking and, you know, even on the side where tripping hazards, you know, somebody could get injured on that. And again, that is, you know, all over the court as well. I had asked for it before to kind of, we, we had gotten the playground reconstructed. And to go along with this, I just think that it would increase usage of this park and court if we did consider getting it reconstructed.
And Lauren, it does get a lot of use now, right?
It does, I mean, there are people playing.
Every time I go by it.
Yeah, mhm, there are people playing all the time.
And it's both children and adults?
It is.
Is there, uh, I, I don't know, can it be rented out?
Um, it, it can be. It's not a full, it's not a full-size court. It's something that we could consider in the future. It's not currently on our rental form.
I see.
And that's, one of the reasons is because of the condition?
Yes, I, I wouldn't suggest renting it in the condition that it is.
But in the future, if it's redone, things like children's clinics in the summer could be held there, things like that.
It could be, yes. I mean, we, we held one at Suck Cliff Park. It's, you know, not far off for, you know, us to hold one here as well.
Right. There's a lot more possibilities when you.
Yes.
And just the safety in.
In general, yes.
Yeah, is my concern, yes. Because we've seen what happens with that, so. Okay. Anybody else have any questions, Lauren?
The last request that I have is the backboards and goals in the gym, in the main gymnasium in the community center. I did not send any pictures to Brittany, but I'll tell you why. They are the side backboards. So there are four of them and they're, it has already been, we already have the backboards. We've had the backboards since my time. They've always been there. They're in a storage closet, they're sitting there. So I would like to get them installed. So this cost is not the purchase of the backboards. This cost is the installation and the goals, so that the, the basket and the nets. We don't have them. So we do have the backboards. They're very old. I'm sure that they have been there possibly since the fellowship house, you know, was constructed in, in.
They are very old.
Yes.
It's very noticeable when we redid the floors.
You're right.
It really stuck out.
Yeah, when we redid the floor in March and we had the basketball tournament, you're, it definitely stuck out to me.
It did, yes.
So we have the backboards, like I said, it's just the installation that we're paying for. And the company that gave us the quote, RJ McCarville, we work with. And they do our backboard and bleacher inspections for the Dona Freo Tournament already. So it's a company that we're very familiar with.
Will you have any questions on that?
So before we move to Lauren's operational line items, I just want to make a note that Lauren is basically asking for 200 and, roughly $240,000 in capital expenditures for 2023. Understand that that full amount will not be utilized out of borough tax resident dollars. You've received park and rec impact fees from developers, so that full amount will cover the full cost of Lauren's requests. Do you want to move into your operational line items?
So there are three budget accounts that have more than a 3% increase, so I'll just go over them. Line item 01451236, my operating equipment and supplies.
Lauren, can you use a page?
Your own page, 18 of 21.
Sorry.
Thank you, that's okay.
So this year, we've been having issues with our fitness equipment and it needing to be maintained and serviced. We did not have a service contract in place or fees accounted for for parts for the fitness equipment in our, in our fitness center. This year, I worked with Steph and we were able to sign a preventative maintenance service contract with Empire Fitness. So they will be yearly serviced twice a year. And if anything is wrong, those parts, you know, will be replaced. So the visits are covered. But if something is, those preventative maintenance visits are covered in that contract. If something goes wrong though, which it has been, they come out for a discounted price. But otherwise, I had to account for the preventative maintenance agreement. And then I also accounted for parts and labor, just in case.
Okay.
That was 451236?
Yes.
That fitness equipment now, believe it or not, is about seven or eight years old. So we're at the stage where we will have, be having to either engage in the preventative maintenance or start looking at replacements.
And Lauren, even that is getting more use than it has in the past.
It has. It's still, it's a very quiet gym, but it does get
It does, yeah.
a lot more use than it did in the past. And I think that will continue. I, I hope it continues to increase. You know, a lot of people come in and ask about it as well, but.
341?
451341, advertising. Costs have increased, so I received an updated quote from the company that we used currently to mail our activity guide. And so those costs are accounted for in that increase.
I really liked the activity guide this year, it was very nice.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very well put together.
Thank you, that was, I have to give credit my administrative assistant, Rachel. She, she helped do it. We worked and put a lot of time into it, so.
It showed, it really did.
Thank you.
It was great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Next line item is 451453, rec software. So this is a yearly increase that's in line with previous years. I received an updated quote for 2023 from Rec Desk, which is our online recreation software and registration portal.
Any questions, anyone?
So that will conclude the recreation department section of this evening's presentation. Any questions pertaining to recreation for Lauren? Okay, thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
I have one thought for the future though, since we were discussing the A Field. And with the continued use and maybe the raise in revenue, at some point, maybe we should look at the restrooms and locker rooms down the road to update, because I think they are also from when I was a child.
They are, and the building does need work, Ray can, can attest to that.
I'm sure he can, yes.
So I agree with that.
Just a thought for the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too, Lauren.
Thank you.
Are you ready? Next up is our police department. And this evening here is George Metz, our chief of police, and his administrative assistant, Kelly Okowski, who will jump in if George needs her, right?
Well, I need her.
I was just trying to be nice, George, no.
Good evening, George.
Hello, everybody. All right, so we'll start with capital, right?
Yes, we'll start with capital.
Okay. If you, if you look at the, your kind of normal capital expenses for, except for a couple of things, the upfit police vehicles. It's kind of a scary number that you see there in front of you. But the problem with getting cars the last two years is still upon us. So when we did the budget, we weren't able to get prices on, a firm price on our cars, right? So nobody was willing to commit to anything, and even the availability of them. So after consultation with the borough manager, she suggested that I just inflate the prices of cars from there. And, and it's actually about 40% that we went over. So I would suspect that that number is not going to be scary. It's inflated for that reason.
George, that includes inflating on the upfitting also, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Across the board. We took what we spent on the cars previously that we, and we up, you know.
Right.
We upped it, so. And there's just cars that need to be replaced and upfitted. And of course, you know, they, the models change slightly and it affects everything we put in. And what we can use, we usually do, unless it's worn out or whatever. But we, this year in example, we had problems. We got one Tahoe, we can't find another one. So we were able to find an Explorer, you know, to, in lieu of, and we got, and we have that. It's not ready to go yet, but we do have it, this past week, we got it. So, you know, even looking forward, I don't know what the Chevy Tahoe situation is going to look like next year for getting them or how long we'll have to wait. Nobody wants to tell you anything, you know?
Because they don't know.
Yeah, they don't. And I don't blame them. It's just that, you know, it puts us in a situation, so.
Right.
The computer workstations is something that we do, you know, every capital budget, we replace four of them just to keep them current. You know, it's a, computers are a big part of what we do, obviously. And we just kind of keep the maintenance of them going by replacing them, the oldest ones, every four years.
George, how many do you, how many do you have as a total?
A to.
The workstation?
Workstations? Yeah, there's, there's, how many?
I'd say 23, 24.
Yeah, that's, that's about right.
So it's close to a five-year.
Yeah.
Close to five years old when they're replaced.
Yeah, we have older ones and new ones that we just replaced. You know, two years old to kind of keep with the whole idea of capital expenditures. In addition to this is the XP Galaxy tablet with a thermal printer. This is also related to one of our line items too. So maybe if I explain it now, you know, you'll get a better idea and, you know, not explain it twice. But we're, we, we currently use a system called Visual Alert as, and all of our parking ticket information is loaded into that and stored in it. The problem with Visual Alert is it's antiquated. It no longer can be supported. It requires a lot of manual stuff to be done. So Kelly took the initiative this past year to look into replacing it. And there's a system called Usite, which is made just for this, that does everything. There's software involved. And part of it is this tablet. So in other words, the, all the input, there will be no more parking tickets written down, right? We won't be buying paper parking tickets, writing them out, put them on a car. And then they would take them and try and decipher them, vehicle ownership, all that kind of stuff, and keep them there. So with this system, it's all computer-driven. It starts with the officer on the street, the parking enforcement officer on the street that uses a handheld tablet that he inputs the information into it, can take a picture of the violation and store that, you know, for future reference. It all goes right to the software, which is another component of this. But it all goes right to the software, creating a much more efficient and professional way of doing things and eliminating a lot of the things that Kelly and Beth have to do on an everyday basis manually. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, it's also integrated with Park Mobile and our residential parking permits. It'll scan the license plate and say whether they need in the app, say whether they have a residential permit, say whether they've been there for more than two hours. It does eye marking for the time zone. So it's like, it, it compacts like four or five different tools that they use into one scan of the tablet.
Okay, so to get the idea is we're replacing something that's antiquated with something that's modern. This, this tablet is part of that. The other end of it, you know, I'll talk about in a minute with the software and stuff like that.
George, I, I do have one question. How, how does the person that owned the car, how do they know they're got a ticket?
Oh, they'll print a ticket.
Okay, because when you said no more paper tickets, I was like, where's the ticket?
They input the information and they were able to print a ticket.
Okay.
And put it on the, on the car, as opposed to having an envelope to date.
I, I see.
Carbon copy.
Okay. Maybe it had to be something, I do, it was just.
But the only thing in the body that's still being used as carbon copy is parking tickets, because that's how it has a front and, and the ticket part.
Okay.
And the other thing is these modular vest carriers with a harness, and I'll explain them to you. It's a carrier that you wear on the outside of your uniform that you insert your, your ballistic panels in, okay? So right now, like, like my, my vest, I wear under my shirt and it has a little thin carrier, it's like a t-shirt. This is an outer carrier with, it has a component system on it, a modular component system on it that you can put your handcuffs in it, your radio, the things that you need that you would normally carry on your waist. It also has a suspension system that attaches to your gun belt. And it takes the weight of all that off your hips. There's been plenty of research and studies done on this and how over, the, over a career, and I'm living proof of what this, it does to you. And, you know, we've had a rash of injuries the last couple of years that some very significant injuries involving surgery and that. So we decided to look into these. We got one, and our call, who had back surgery, on-duty injury, he's been wearing it. he's been wearing it, and, um, we evaluated it, and he can't say enough good things about it, how better he feels and how it's it's, uh, much more convenient to carry that stuff. It looks like your uniform. It doesn't look like this model gear that the military wears, you know, you won't notice it. It's just like the uniform shirt. It's fashioned that way. It doesn't, um, it doesn't have a military type appearance to it. It still looks like a uniform shirt. And if you've seen Eric, if you know him, you probably didn't even notice it on him. And you won't even notice the suspenders either, because they kind of come from inside of it and all. So, you know, I'm I'm requesting that just for the longevity of the officers, you know, make it more comfortable. Um, it is a lot of weight when you start adding it up, putting twenty pounds on your your hips, you know, and another, you know, with the vest and all. So a lot of departments have them. The, uh, one of the part-time firefighters, Megan, is a is a fire, is a police officer in Bucks County, and she their department has them, and I asked her about it, and she said, how much do they like them? It is also something that, uh, the our Divid Trust would, um, as I understand it, help to supplement that cost with a grant. That you have to you have to spend the money first, and then whatever is available, you can request at the end of it. So good off, and I plan on doing that, so would, uh, you know, offset the cost somewhat.
George?
Yes?
Because they're worn on the outside, can they be shared between the men so that each, um, group is one?
No, I mean, I could they be? Probably, but you know, then you that would eliminate a name tag on it and, you know, like.
Would they be fitted, like?
Yeah, and everybody's everybody's different, you know, you got big guys, little guys. And, um, yeah, I I would see that presenting a problem.
I have one other question. Um, how old are the ones we have, that the officers have, like?
The vest?
Replace them, yes. Did we replace them all at once, or how does that, how did that work?
The the guys that still occasionally wear an outside cover, they're old. They're they're predate me.
I don't remember them being in a budget before, either
Yeah, no.
or under. Have we done either? Like, you were, some of them wear them under, right?
Yeah, most of them are wearing them under now.
So but I don't remember them being in a budget either. I
They come with a vest, so every five years we replace our vest, and they come with a the normal carrier.
Okay, so we do it every five years anyway. That's my question.
Yep.
So George, is this new vest, this outer cover, the same life expectancy, the five years?
Yeah, it's the Kevlar that you have to replace. Um, the only reason, these are machine washable, you know, you can take care of them. The only reason to replace the outer carrier would be just it got worn out or crappy looking or whatever, you know, contaminated, um, whatever.
But, uh- Kevlar fits in?
Mm-hmm, the panels go in. It's like if I handed it to you empty,
Right.
you could do this. You slipped the panels inside of it. And the the panels are what you have, so the panels that are fitted for you now is what goes in the vest. There's no new vest. There's no new ballistic armor involved. It's the carrier. The other thing is the license plate readers. You know, this is part of an initiative that we, um, are moving forward with, which we'll explain next week in greater detail. But there needed to be a place in the budget for it, so that number ended up, um, there. Uh, I'm a little reluctant to give it get into details about it right now, unless you want me to.
So just so just to clarify for this evening, next week at your October fifth work session, you're going to have a presentation from your emergency management team, all your emergency services on the borough's public safety initiative.
Okay.
Um, so you'll hear more information about those cameras specifically next week, correct? And how that builds into our full public safety initiative. So what's important for this evening, and I'm not trying to interject over you, that the approximate number for twenty-three cameras is about two two thousand per camera with a five-year agreement. So it comes out to a total of approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, that's an upfront cost for five years' worth of service, in essence. From a strictly financial position, if we're not talking about how that fits into our whole public safety initiative this evening, we have impact money coming specifically from a developer in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that has to be earmarked specifically for traffic and or safety initiatives. Our thinking would be that this, given the fact that it is an initiative from a public safety perspective that is really pushing us into the future in a very positive way when it comes to the safety and welfare of our residents and our constituents and our very, um, numerous corporations that we now have in the borough, this is going to be important. Um, and if we are covering the cost for a five-year period with non-borough funds, in essence, because it's coming directly from a developer for a purpose earmarked of this nature, then it's really something that the police department has presented to council, the mayor and administration, as something we really should look at for the future. If that helps in your decision-making process. I'm sorry. Does that make sense?
No, that's perfectly fair.
And if the if the presentation is next week, we as a council still have time to decide on it.
Yeah, this evening what you're going to do is you're going to see the full picture. And I think for the purposes of this evening, we'll build that two hundred and thirty thousand dollar number into your full capital budget, and you'll see how those numbers lay out. In terms of getting into the particulars, it probably is best, I don't know if you both agree, to review that with your whole team here, so you have the whole picture, and you see how they fit into the future initiative that's being presented to you, would be our recommendation.
So at the workshop, will we get numbers that will tell us what it will cost us past that five years?
No, we're giving you a number that is, what it will cost past the five years, I can't tell you what that cost will be in five years. I can tell you that the estimated per camera cost for this year, for five years, is two thousand per camera. And I'm assuming that that would stay the same, plus whatever increase comes, whatever percentage increase over those five years, which could be significant, but you will be able to strategically plan for that increase that you know is coming.
The borough doesn't own the cameras.
That is correct.
So we don't own the cameras, and we won't maintain the cameras. The company will maintain and own the cameras, and then it'll be a decision after five years. Technology five years from now might be substantially better and cheaper.
Right.
And and also, you know, a detective is going to be here next week to to explain the uses of this, what not, what we won't use it for, um, in detail, how it's being used now, how prevalent it is, and the crimes that are being stopped. So, yeah, he'll be able to get into, you know,
Right. I think, yeah, in his defense, you had a detective that put together basically a five-page, very thorough explanation as to the cameras for your budget packet. Um, and I think hearing from him directly in terms of presenting that to you with the whole team is important. It'll paint a picture that is clearer for you.
Everyone okay with that?
Any questions on capital, because that's all I have.
Uh, George, just the vehicle that we'll purchase this year. I know that we have a rotating cycle. We probably started that two years ago, three years ago.
I think it was three years ago at this point.
Three?
Yeah, three.
So we're not halfway through the fleet at this point?
Yeah.
Um, and just to clarify, in terms of our vehicles, yes, they are within our depreciation schedule, so it's the two, those two are the next on the list. Um, we will be making a concerted effort to be looking at the introduction of electric and hybrid into our any into our fleet, the entire borough fleet where applicable. So again, Chief Metz indicated that there is, there are slightly inflated costs, mostly because of the shortage of vehicles that we that is happening nationally, but also because we will be investigating that shift to electric and or hybrid vehicles across the board, where we can.
George, George, um, so we have three new council members from last cycle. Can you explain the wear and tear on a police car versus a regular car?
Yeah, you know, well, they run a lot more, even, you know, they get a lot, they they constantly run. And there's a lot more of the stuff that our cars don't face, which is the in and out constantly, and, you know, in and out, to grabbing the steering wheel, all those things. The seats start to fade, you know, way before your car would, you know what I mean? And then my advice to any of you is don't buy an old police car, because it's tired and it's done and, uh, you know, it's worn out. And and it's, and, you know, in five years in a police car, it's it's on its last legs. And then we do have mechanical problems with them. We have a car that just, we're replacing, the Explorer I told you about, we're replacing a current Explorer we have, which is an older car. The transmission wagon is completely gone, needs to be rebuilt, six grand for a new transmission, six grand. So we're not spending that money on that.
With the outfits that we do, you also lose warranty on them, right?
Excuse me?
You lose some warranty on them also because of the outfits and what's done to the vehicles, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and there's things, yeah, there's things that we do to them that you wouldn't do to your own car, too, like drilling holes and mounting gun lockers and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so there's not that possibility of saving money on them either, because there is, the warranty is just not there.
Right, and, you know, we 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 don't do too bad with our cars. I mean, they all have mechanical issues, but they, you know, generally cars are good today, and they last, you know, they, uh, but, you know, when we're done with them, they're done. They're worn out.
Um, the total police department capital budget that's presented to you this evening for two thousand and twenty-three is four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And if there's no other questions on capital, then George, if you want to move into your line items.
So, uh, four ten three oh three, information service.
George, give us a page.
We are we are starting on page ten, but the first line item for George is actually on page eleven.
Okay.
So it's it's, uh, four ten three oh three. It's an information service, uh, line item. And what that covers is, uh, it's Thompson Reuters West is the company that we pay, and there's a system called Clear that we use. Um, I don't know if I've ever spoken to you about it before. And what it is, it's like a big clearinghouse of information. That's public information. It's not from, you know, databases that we have, we're just privy to. Um, if you're under the business, you could get Clear, and what it does is it searches all kind of databases, and we use it all the time. It's incredible. Gives you all the addresses, neighbors, relatives, marriages, divorces, judgments against you, court cases against you, all that kind of stuff can be compiled in a report. And this is what the information service is. Like I said, we only use the one company now, and that's Thompson Reuters. And there's an increase in the soft, in the, uh, in the cost of doing business with them, which is, uh, it's slight, it's, uh, it's up about three hundred dollars, two hundred and eighty dollars. So we're asking for five hundred and, or five thousand eight hundred and eighty. Oh, we're we're just asking for the cost of the increase, that's all. Um, it is really important kind of software. So much of what we do is technology and software and all this kind, and it's just the cost of doing business with them. Any questions on that? Three seven four, parking meter expenses, and this is what I touched on before. We're, as you know, we're phasing out the parking meters, but that line item is where we included this U-Site information. So there's, other than the actual tablet hardware of it, there's software involved. It's five hundred dollars a month. It supports the parking, the the, uh, there is a data package involved with that, but we'll keep that in our in our teledata line item. And, uh, we'll no longer have to buy the amount of tickets that we buy now, you know, stuff like that. So there will be a little offset there, but like I said, I explained before, it's, you know, we can't, the system we're using, it could go tomorrow, and there's nothing we can do about it, you know? And it and it, this eliminates a lot of the human error clerical stuff that we would have to, that we're doing now, and, uh, just replace it with a modern updated system that is built just for doing this. So that's the increase. It's it's to support that.
George, do you know how much we generate in income in parking tickets?
I don't have it in front of me now, but I do know,
Just an idea?
and Kelly assured me earlier, brought this to my attention. Even with this increase, the parking revenue still pays for itself. It's not exceeding
Okay.
the revenue that we're bringing in.
Okay.
All right, you know, that far exceeds what.
And this will help generate more income?
Um, I don't know if it could. What do you think?
Um, I mean, probably three to five percent of the tickets written, we can never go anywhere with, because we can't read the license plate, or you can't, so it's going to take out at least that portion of it. I think it'll also be a quicker, you know, process for them to write tickets. So it might be a slight increase, but it's just more the ease of the administrative side of it.
Okay.
I didn't anticipate that that aspect of it. That's why I kind of stumbled through that, but.
Sorry, George, you know, I'm a number person. I, sorry.
Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, we'll wait and see. Yeah, maybe we can give you a report. You'll see it in the numbers after we start using it.
Okay.
Um, any questions on that before I move on?
No, if you're just going.
Three eighty-four, four ten three eighty-four is a copier lease expenses. Again, we have a copier in a patrol room that we own. It can't be fixed. It's, um, it's old. You can't get parts for it, and it's replacing them, and it will be folded into the current lease that we have with Conica Minolta. You know, so they provide the ink and, uh, you know, it would just be replacing the copier that's shot. It's, you know, it could break, it could break today, and it 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 barely works, from what I understand, and it, and it, you know.
They're sometimes your biggest nightmare. I get it, yeah.
Yeah, it just needs to be replaced, that's all, and, uh, there's always a cost to that. And like I said, it would be then, this is a an item that we own. Maybe we could sell it on municipal bid if they sell things like that on there. I don't know.
So the the leasing of the copier also comes with service for it?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, and and replacement of parts?
Right, so the one we currently have now, we spend what? What is it, forty dollars a month?
Yeah, it's like forty dollars a month if you can't use it, so we don't have any usage charges.
Yeah, it's forty dollars a month for service that came along with this thing that we can't use because they can't fix it.
Because it's too old.
Okay, um, and that's all I have. They're my line items.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
George, with all the new parking in the garages and everything, we feel that we can cover all of that with Park Mobile and the current existing parking staff we have?
Well, that that's a discussion, um, I think it probably should be increased, and, you know, um, just for better coverage. And, um, I don't have particular numbers for you on that. I wasn't prepared to speak to it.
Can you gather some performance indicators for us to plan from that?
Okay, yeah, I think.
It's too early to decide that, but because we're just getting them up and running.
For the future, yeah, sure.
And George, are they mostly all part-time, or are they all part-time?
We don't have any full-time.
They're all part-time, okay. And that seems to work well, right?
Yeah, and the guys we have, they're older guys, you know, they they show up, they're good employees, you know, they show up, they do the job, you know?
Does anybody else have any questions for Chief Metz?
No.
Can I go first next to you? Lauren's a tough act to follow.
You did great, George.
All right.
Thank you, George.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, I did forget something.
The computer software.
I was going to ask that, but.
Yeah, okay, again, this is a, uh, it's an increase in some of the software we have. One is Power DMS, which manages, you know, our, um, policies and all those type of things. The other thing is CLEAN, which is Commonwealth Law Enforcement Network. That's all of our terminals and all that stuff, you know, you got to pay for that, that's going up. And the LPR that we talked about, software is included in that too, for like the twenty-nine hundred hours. So, I'm sorry about that, it's on my second page and I forgot the third page.
You'd seen it good for Lauren next year, don't you?
I'll set the bar low.
You did great.
All right.
Thank you, George.
Next up is Public Services, um, we have the chief engineer. Okay, I'm going to go out of schedule slightly, I'm going to present the other capital items.
Okay.
We'll go back to Public Services.
Sure.
We're running a little bit ahead of schedule, so we'll give.
Stephanie, your mic, please. Thank you.
Thank you, wow, I just got yelled at.
Uh-oh.
Wow, everyone's laughing, I hear. Um, okay, let's get back to business. So, um, other capital items, so we will start with capital engineering product, projects.
Okay.
Um, we have some placeholders in your capital budget. Right now, we're working collaboratively with Ty Burkowski on some infrastructure issues that tie into his current development down on Jones Street, um, and whether or not we can kind of pool our financial resources to fix a culvert that may or may not be an issue in the future. So if we can proactively address it and collaborate is what our intent here is. We're actively engaged in conversations with his engineer and our engineer. Right now, we're looking at a placeholder of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I don't know where that number is going to land, I don't know what our, our potential contribution may be. So at this point, it's a placeholder for what we believe is an opportunity to address an issue we know exists, which if there's a developer that's already working in that area and on that same issue, there's economies of scale, potential savings that we may be able to take advantage of. So placeholder in your budget at this point. The DEP released a mandatory required MS four BMP project. We've gone through the design phase, the testing phase, so right now we really are at the implementation phase. They, we've indicated a basin that would basically go in underground and capture stormwater at Suckliff Park in the middle of basically that open section of the field outside of the baseball diamond, down the hill from the playground and the basketball court. We're ready to roll it out, the issue is that inflation hit and the cost, which was around a six hundred thousand dollar cost, is now a one point two million dollar project. The DEP requires the project to be complete within a five-year cycle. We have two years left on that cycle and of course, within that cycle was also COVID. So there was restrictions on what we could do, when we could do it. Now we've, we're ready to roll it out and implement it and the costs have actually doubled. So what we're looking to do is, um, I put a placeholder in here for a potential redesign. I am not building in one point two million dollars for a DEP mandatory project. I will if I have to, but I will be asking all of you to sign off on a letter to the DEP, which would either ask for an extension, which would push the project a year or two, which hopefully would decrease some of the costs and get it more into a reasonable timeframe, or request from our elected representatives, not in Conshohocken, but outside of Conshohocken, to potentially look at funding options to assist with that kind of financial burden. So that is a placeholder, but understand the magnitude of that one point two million dollar project that is being mandated by the DEP. It has to be done, it's important that it's done. It's just a huge financial strain on a small community and all communities across the state, quite frankly. So I'm working with the Montgomery County Managers Consortium to kind of pool our resources and see what everyone else is going to do because we're ultimately all going to be faced with the same timeframe and the same wildly cost inflated, inflated costs. So, right now a placeholder, but not for the full, the full picture. The Suckliff Park Gabian Basket Project, so if you'll recall, with Storm Ida, we had some flooding issues in that, in the developments down past Suckliff Park. We've done some work with the homeowners directly, kind of guiding them in, in items that they could do with their individual residents. We've also taken proactive measures in Suckliff Park to build a berm, to try to redirect the stormwater. Though the hill and wall leading down to Suckliff Park potentially could be an alternative option that may help if it's necessary. So, we had those water issues, those water issues seem to be resolved. I have not received a complaint or concern from those residents. Kudos to our public service team who went out and really did some good work to rectify the issue as best as they could. So right now it seems and appears that it might not be necessary, but I do have an engineered plan in hand, should it be something I have to pull off a shelf and utilize in the near future, depending on whether that we can't predict and or control. So that is a cost of sixty thousand dollars, again, placeholder if needed. Uh, the Aubrey Collins retaining wall, so you've approved that as an emergency expenditure. I wasn't sure when we prepared the budget where that was going to fall and how fast we were going to turn that around. So there is up to that hundred thousand dollar mark built into that four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar figure. It will be removed if it's not necessary, so understand that that number could come off. And then the last item that you'll see in the engineering section is the park and pocket park engineering costs. So we're estimating between a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, that's going to be necessary to actually complete the work at the two pocket parks that we're looking at completing in 2023. So there's the Fritz Lodge, there's the Santander Bank, we've discussed them publicly, you have agreements that are upcoming. There is going to be grading, ex-grading, cost of materials, that is the full potential cost that could go into. I, I will tell you that we received much higher costs from an engineering perspective. We are going to pull that in-house and try to do most of those projects ourselves to keep costs down.
Julian, is nothing for any of this?
This is all a borough cost. And understand that any of those costs are related to parks and recreation. So that full cost will not be paid by tax dollars, it will come directly out of your impact fund, which will have come directly from residents, which in all of your land development agreements that they've signed requires them to contribute to open space, green space, recreation space and facilities in the borough. So you're pumping those resources right back into the community. Any questions on capital engineering projects?
Did you, I'm sorry. Did you talk about the pathing redone?
Not yet, but I'm going to get there, okay. Traffic engineering projects and grants. The first item is the Greenlight Go Grant. So we were the recipient of a one point seven million dollar grant for the Greenlight Go Program. We are required to ma, to provide a commitment to match up to a certain percentage. So that percentage equates to three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, considering that you're going to get, uh, synchronized signalization, I was wondering whether I was going to get that out without being tongue-tied, that ties into your whole CMAC project that you did along Fayette Street and with the bridge, along Elm Street at all of your intersections, that cost, especially considering that again, you have impact funds that are coming in for traffic specifically from developers that is going to go directly into that figure of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
So that's Elm Street, not the Suckliff.
Correct.
Thank you, Governor Wolf.
The A R L E Mast Arm Grant, so this is a project that is underway. Again, we were awarded the grant, um, of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the actual installation of the pedestrian flashing warning devices at Fourth and Seventh. The, this project is actually going to be going out to bid this year. So we are carrying the costs that were budgeted in twenty-two into twenty-three, and that is in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That is the match required for the project.
Didn't we actually even have to carry that in twenty-one?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Didn't we have that in twenty-one also?
We did, so that was a, that was a COVID application.
Right.
So all grants were shut down, um, and then when the government started reopening, we were awarded the grant and we're just, everything is, is slowly trickling back to life, I would say.
It's a long time coming.
So Steph, when you have matches in previous budgets.
Yes.
And they don't get used.
Yes.
Can you let the folks know how you carry that and where you?
Yes, so every capital budget, for example, is housed in a capital fund. So the borough has specific operating funds, so you have, for your full capital expenditures, it's basically a capital fund. So think of it almost as it's a separate bank account. While it's not a separate bank account, it is in essence a separate bank account. You have a balance that sits in that account that is specific and earmarked for capital. If the expenditures in a year save a grant that we thought we were going to get and then we didn't get it, or we did get it, but it doesn't get implemented until the following fiscal year, it, in essence, that money essentially goes into that balance and sits there to, for you to then utilize to fund the next year's capital budget. Does that do a good enough job? Okay, so basically.
It doesn't get wiped away.
It doesn't get wiped away.
It sits there.
It stays in that fund in order for you to carry it forward to the next year and utilize it, um, in the next fiscal cycle.
Right, which is what we're doing.
Correct.
Thanks.
Um, the CMAC program on Fayette is almost complete, that has about five thousand dollars remaining, so that is in there and that will get closed out. I added in the TC DI West Conshohocken Grant, so we went for this grant before. We did not get awarded that grant. I think this grant in particular, especially since Penoni and Brian Keveney, who is our traffic engineer, is the traffic engineer for both Conshohocken and West Conshohocken, and really, um, I would say innovative and forward-thinking in terms of solutions and alternatives that could potentially alleviate future traffic in both of our municipalities. We've had discussions with Brian, we're going to have another discussion in the next couple of weeks to close out this year, kind of coordinating with West Conshohocken again to see if we can kind of maybe put a push. We've had some of, um, uh, we've had representation in both of our municipalities to try to support those efforts so we could get the grant. And the whole idea here is to get a shelf-ready plan. So if PennDOT has funding available, they're more likely to approve and select a shelf-ready engineered plan than something from a municipality that hasn't even been engineered, approved, et cetera. So that, um, is in there at a placeholder of about fifty thousand dollars. And we would be coordinating specifically with Conshohocken, West Conshohocken and potentially Upper Marion, with basic, with some of the initiatives they have on their docket and kind of how all three entities could collaborate.
That would be great.
The Oak Street Railroad, Railroad Preemption, so that is tied to the Oak Street Crossing and also coming up to the actual traffic light. So with the installation of the crossing, there's a lot of requirements that SEPTA has in order to make those crossings safe and then also PennDOT has in order to make the, the traffic signals and the traffic flow and all of those items safe and efficient. Preemption is one of them. And Mattson Mill in specifically, in their land development agreement, were required to contribute a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that would specifically go towards this preemption system, so that is what is in your capital budget. And then the last traffic engineering project is the Fayette Street Road Diet. So for this evening, I'm going to talk about numbers. Your traffic engineer, Brian Keveney, is going to be back to present the road diet analysis and study results to you on November second. So in terms of the concept of the road diet, I'm going to let Brian review that. But I am building it into the budget and understand that it is in the budget from a match perspective only. So the full project cost equates to approximately a range of around one point three million dollars. We as the borough would not be budgeting for that. We as the borough would be handing the final engineered study and analysis to PennDOT and asking PennDOT for a grant to fund that one point three million dollar project if it's initiative you wanted to move forward with. So that's a deciding factor that you haven't even determined whether you're going to support or not. You have to have the results of the analysis first in order to do that. So he will be back in November to present them. What we are preparing for is, if we were to receive, if we were to seek and receive a grant in the amount that it would cost to actually install and implement the road diet program, then you would be looking at potentially requiring to budget thirty percent of that grant, which equates to approximately the three hundred and ninety thousand dollar range. So that is built into your budget based off of, and whether or not you decide to support that initiative or move forward with that initiative. Again, if it's something that you don't move forward with, the money doesn't get lost. It simply will be transferred into your 2024 budget and earmarked for whatever is next in terms of your, um, community initiatives that you want to budget for. So in total, um, you're looking at about one point one million dollars for traffic engineering, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for capital engineering. I also have an increased contribution to Narberth Ambulance. So they, as like everyone else, have seen an increase in vehicle costs. So we contribute annually to the cost to either upkeep, maintain and or purchase new ambulances that service our community. So we have historically contributed around thirty thousand, we're increasing that to fifty thousand. Narberth is a pivotal member of our entire operation. And where you'll hear from your administration moving in the future, increasing our annual contribution to Narberth Ambulance. But for this year, we're increasing, I'm recommending that you increase your capital contribution to Narberth to that fifty thousand range.
So Steph, that's an increase, it's not a transfer of money that was previously.
No, it is simply, for this year, it is just an increase in the contribution. And then the last item I have in my capital is the grant matching. So we received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from DCNR for the Suckliff Trail remodel, um, and installation. We also received a sixty thousand dollar grant on top of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, making a total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, grant dollars to fund the Suckliff Trail Rehabilitation Project. That trail rehabilitation project has been engineered and will be a go in 2023 with the. with the support we received from the state, which is fantastic. And that is at the estimated cost of the project, our share of that would be around the three hundred and fifty thousand mark, that might be less. We received the D C N R grant. The Greenways and Trails grant was completely off of our radar. And then Senator Hughes prized us with another sixty thousand dollars for the project, which is fantastic. So we will be moving ahead with that project next year.
Will we be able to include that small pan from Suck Cliff Lane up to the park because of putting the berm in? They have no access now, and they would have to walk all the way through. They just want a small one and not.
We'll have to look at it, because they asked for the berm, so if you cut into the berm, then you're decreasing the integrity.
From where Brook comes in, from the pavement, they would like to see that from the pavement up to the park. Do they connect that way?
Well, we'll have to, so everything was submitted.
Okay.
So no, if it's not on the engineered plan that was approved by the state, which then the grant got funded, but I'll have to look into it. We can talk offline and see if there's a way we can incorporate that in.
Is this being done by our people or outside of our.
So we have to bid the whole project.
Okay.
So the whole project, the whole scope of the project that was engineered and submitted to the state will now have to get packaged. It's a very lengthy process. Depending on the bidding process and the responses we may or may not get, given the state of the world, it might not happen in twenty-twenty-three, but there is extensions on the grant too. So it's, you know, we'll stay within the grant parameters, but we can't control who bids. You heard from Lauren earlier when we bid the Auburn Collins Court, we got no, the responses we received were over what we could expend, so that's out of our control. Any questions on engineering, traffic engineering, grant, capital dollars? Great, okay.
Thank you, Steph.
Stephanie.
I'll stand there.
Stephanie.
Yeah. Do you want a break?
Sure, we're gonna do a quick, quick, soon a break. You get your policy.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you? That's good. So you're going to go over our public services budget?
Sure.
Okay, and emergency services or firehouse services?
Yes.
Okay. Whenever you're ready. I kind of thought that might happen.
Okay, so I'll start with the fire, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, do you want to start with the line items?
Sure, you just give us a page.
Okay, 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 sorry.
So we're doing fire?
Okay, so for the fire department.
Okay.
The outfit for the new engine that comes in two thousand and twenty-four that's replacing the two thousand and seven squad right now. So it's hose, equipment, tools, just to outfit the truck. So basically, the equipment that's on there right now, and I'm talking about the hose, is probably fifteen, twenty years old. This new hose that we got, so the five-inch hose that we lay from the hydrant into the truck is rubber right now. It's about a hundred and fifty pounds per roll. With the new hose, it's about sixty pounds, so it's lighter, it's more maneuverable, it doesn't kink, better firefighting equipment.
That's great.
So that's basically the outfit of the new engine.
Okay.
The Hurst tool that is next to it. So this is the generation three of the Hurst equipment. So as you know, cars, technology, the metal is stronger. So the hydraulic tools that we currently have cannot cut or basically pry the newer cars. So this newer equipment now, this cuts, the old stuff cuts around three thousand pounds. This new tool will cut around seven, eight thousand pounds. So it's much stronger and can cut the new metal. And what's unique about this new generation three is it's now waterproof.
Well, that's great.
So when we have a flood and we have to go down along the river and we have to start prying doors, this will work underwater.
Oh, that's great.
Yep. So technology, it's the third generation. We do have the first generation that sits on the air truck right now, and that's a full set of cutters and spreaders, which you guys would know as the jaws of light.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on that? And I turn the page, so the new command vehicle, that will be replacing a two thousand and thirteen Tahoe at this time. This command vehicle is basically. It's used for running major scenes. It will have a command system in the back, accountability system, which is big at a fire scene, so we know where everybody's at. So we don't lose anybody in the building. And it also will give me an area to run the command, the incident itself.
Is it the twenty-two Ford Expedition?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
And is that the cost of that until you did it anywhere?
That is going to, every single cost that you will see, you can use the word inflated on. So with CoStar, we have to purchase everything through the procurement program through the state, and we use CoStar, which is their preferred company. So what happens, what happened with, CoStar notified us about vehicles, and I was going to say something when George was up there, but CoStar notified us with vehicles that there was going to be issues this coming year. And then when we started talking to the dealer, we figured out what those issues were. So generally, just in general numbers, if a vehicle's fifty-five thousand dollars, right away, CoStar takes twenty percent off, let's say that, of the price. So we would get twenty percent off of CoStar. Now, that is negotiable from dealer to dealer, some dealers will give you twenty-two percent, some dealers will twenty-one, but in general, it's twenty percent. This year, the dealer's recommended, because of the lack of vehicles, that we not do that in our budget here. That we go from the sticker price and go in the opposite direction, add twenty percent to the cost. Because they didn't know what they were going to get, what their availability, and I think that's still true for the most part. We have this as touted as a twenty-two vehicle, we might be getting a twenty-three vehicle. There might not be any twenty-twenty-twos available. And this is a Ford, with Chevrolet, Dave would know this, Chevrolet actually limited it to a twenty-four hour period where you could order a vehicle. So you only have twenty-four hours to order a vehicle, you put your order in, and that's it, you were done. You couldn't do anything after that. So the numbers that you're going to see are based on an inflated number. We would think that, we would normally see a Chevy Tahoe in the area between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars. But we're going off of a higher number, around fifty, fifty-five.
Chevy wasn't even able to provide a price for that order?
Yeah, so that just tells you where we're at with this. And it's, even with the hose that Tim's talking about, the price of that is exponentially higher than it was the year before. But by the time the hose is here, who knows? It could be twenty percent less because it just became available. Same thing with outfitting all these vehicles, most of the outfitting, most of the parts are foreign parts, very few are from the United States. We ordered the high-water vehicle lights six months ago, and it's being installed today. It's the first time they were available, and he was the only guy that could come up with them, everybody else was out. So we're doing the best we can with those numbers, but I think that's a pretty accurate number. And I would say that that's an accurate number, I would stick with that number because of the outfitting part, which is the scarier part. Vehicle might be cheaper, but the outfitting might be more.
The outfitting may end up to be significantly more of an increase than the actual vehicle.
We don't know what's going to happen in the next six months, if something goes awry in the next six months and the availability becomes less of everything, then yes. The good thing is that we've made substantial purchases over the last four or five years in vehicles and changed our policy as how to rotate them, so we have some pretty decent, we have a pretty decent fleet as opposed to a fleet where we had vehicles that were fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, where parts are not available, period. You just can't get them anywhere, and we would have been stuck with a car, vehicle, truck pickup that we couldn't use.
Currently, the fire hose is about ten to eleven months out.
The fire truck is two years, it's going to take, it takes two years to get a fire truck, yep.
It's crazy.
Do we have enough cuff links to join other fires?
We do, so pretty much standard through the industry. Five inches, it's just a snap that goes into each other and you twist it. And then any kind of firefighting, like what we use for house building fires, inch and three-quarter, two and a half, and three-inch. So it's all standard pretty much through the industry.
On your list in front of you, we had an emergency boat listed on there as well, that has been removed from the capital line item. So your total for fire, the request this evening, is approximately one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Any questions for Tim on capital? Tim, do you want to move into four-eleven?
Yes.
You're turning to page twelve of your packet.
Okay, for four-eleven, twenty, or two-twenty, fire prevention. A part of the public safety initiative is to get more community events for the fire department, and it's been a big hit. So what we have done this year is we've done T-shirts, handouts, fire safety stuff for the residents. So I'm asking for an increase of a thousand dollars in that line item. Vehicle fuel, I think.
Yeah, let's go across the board with vehicle fuel, so we don't have to address them with every single one. Everybody knows what's going on with vehicle fuel, I think we are paying at this, at budget time last year, we're probably paying a dollar sixty-two because we don't pay tax for a gallon, and we're probably up in the three-fifty, three-forty area right now.
With our discount, it's about three-forty?
It's dropped somewhat, I would say without taxes, we're probably paying right around three dollars. But we did join a consortium with Upper Marion and several other municipalities to see if we could get a better price. But our provider's been very good, and whenever we have a major issue, he does get out there pretty quick, Fox Fuel. So we didn't want to jeopardize that really. In these times, having long-term relationships with some of these companies has become very good for us. We were able to make a phone call and get what we need. So I just want to take fuel off the board, we just don't need to talk about that.
As we continue going through the line items, all of your two-three-one accounts will have been covered by Ray's explanation.
Okay.
Four-eleven, three-three-six, vehicle repair and maintenance. This is adding the high-water vehicle in for the annual maintenance of the vehicle. And then, uh, three-seventy-four, equipment and repair. This is adding, um, a thousand dollars increase for the QRS equipment, medical equipment, so we can replace it in the bags as we use it.
Okay.
Can you tell QRS means?
QRS is the Quick Response Service. That's when we run the fire truck with the ambulance, and it's been a big success so far.
That's great.
Yep.
Curious, um, how frequently do you need to change that, those materials?
So everything on the fire. Everything has a different date, but probably we go through the bags every three to four months.
Okay.
You know, when things get stuffed out, probably a month at this point.
And with QRS, that's also, um, that's also state mandated, and we, and Narberth's doctor has to sign off on everything. So, um, it's really not a choice for us. I mean, he, he, he put, they put their license and they put their equip, uh, their reputation on the line by allowing us to be part of a QRS, so.
And that's what we just did all the training for, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Any other questions for Tim, for capital or operational?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Hi, Frank.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm going to keep going over the public services items.
Okay.
Okay. We'll start with the John Deere Gator. It's the, uh, so we have several in the, our police department has one in the fire department. We'd like to get a new one for public services. Ours was given, borrowed, or lent it out to Narberth Ambulance for the gurney. So we'd like to get another one. It's definitely a piece of equipment that is used a lot by us for special events mainly. And now with the new track going in at Suckler Park, that'll be the piece of equipment we use to access parts of the park that we can't bring trucks into.
Right, right.
And there are several other parks that we are limited access to, to get bigger vehicles and pickup trucks and stuff and such.
Right, like Mary Wood.
Yeah, exactly. So this will be a big benefit for us.
And let me, uh, the, the, the old, the oldest Gator we had, which is the one that we repurposed for Narberth Ambulance, has a gurney system on it. So when we had, for instance, the Fun Fest, instead of trying to drive an ambulance through the middle of the Fun Fest, we stationed an ambulance on the perimeter, and we would have the gurney, the, the Gator with the gurney on it, go get someone if necessary and bring them to the ambulance rather than, there's two states. It's, it's a lot safer, it also doesn't disrupt the entire event. People see an ambulance going through the middle of an event, everybody gets attracted to it, and then we, we have a big issue.
Didn't we use that St. Patrick's Day when that person fell?
That was the first time, we just didn't have it changed over.
Right.
And Narberth is ecstatic about.
Right, and it was right there when that, that happened, yeah.
Yeah, it really, it really does help, everybody knows how congested it is here, and to get an ambulance down some of these streets, period, is difficult. When it, there's a large event like that, people tend to park a little too close to the corners or pretty much everywhere they want. We have a difficulty getting them through. So that one is all encased in glass, and it's very easy to maneuver. It's a smaller one, but the, uh, the, the, it's been very successful with the, with the gurney system. Luckily, we haven't had to use it that much, but.
But it was there when we needed it.
It also is very good for the parking garages, which the ambulance, for the most part, can't get in.
Right. Very good for all the hills like in Suckler Park.
Yeah.
Right?
It's used for a lot of things. I mean, it's very, it's a versatile piece of equipment. Okay, so next I'll move on to the blacktop coal planer. That's a piece of equipment that's going to go on the front of our skid steer, the, our CAT skid steer. To, basically, it's a milling machine to mill up the road. We can do larger potholes with that, where, right now, we're very limited on the size of potholes that we can fix.
Right.
We can probably get a little bit bigger with this. And now with our new mastic machine that we got that has been out on the road now for a couple of weeks, this will be a big help.
Can we do ten foot yet, Frank?
Let's, I'm sorry.
Not that, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
So next would be the Ventrac, which is a piece of equipment we already have, but this thing is, it has multiple attachments you can get. There's probably thirty or forty different attachments that are available for this. And we're asking for the stump grinder and the power bucket. They, the stump grinder will help our personnel from always calling in a tree company to do the job that if we had this piece of equipment, we could do. And the power bucket is something that can be used to carry material, mulch, uh, safety surface into the parks, again, so we don't have to bring a bigger truck in. We can dump it in an area and transport it back and forth, making it a lot easier for us and more efficient. I'll move on to the bucket truck. This is a nice piece of equipment for us to have. We don't, we had never had one. The possibilities are endless with this. I mean, trimming trees that are hot, too high, again, not having to call in a tree company. And, you know, the, the banners, there's banners that go up. We have snowflakes that we could probably put up. It saves us from paying outside contractors sometimes.
So that would also include the flags, right?
Yeah, flags, you know, anytime we have to change flags, we don't have to call. Right now, we're kinda limited. We have to call our electrical contractor and probably, sure he charges us per hour for his bucket truck.
Right.
So if we were able to have one of our own, it cuts out a lot of that cost.
I'll, uh, I'll chime in with this one a little bit. This is a, a little more complicated for, for the budgeting part of it. So, um, the bucket truck that we borrow from the electric, literally borrow from the electrician, if we borrow it, um, it's, he, he gives us a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five dollar an hour rate. If we were to rent one from a company, I think the last price we got was forty-five hundred for the week.
Yeah.
To rent one for the week. Um, but then we'd have to have work for the week. We'd have to have, be able to do something all week long. And if it rains or if we have an event, we eliminated that, and we have to go to another week. That's number one. Number two, the availability of these things is, you just can't get them. So we would probably not see this in two thousand and twenty-three. Even if it was, even if it was approved, um, we would probably not be able to get one for eighteen months. They are just very difficult to get, but if we have it in the, if one becomes available because we have it budgeted for, we'll be able to get one. We will try to order one, but I don't think we will get a VIN number for it right away. So that's the idea. The other big part of this is, is the idea here of, we have LED systems in our street, streetlights. We haven't had to do much work on them because LED lights last a little longer. But as they get older, so we'll have the replacement of those, and it is replacement. There is no repair. You just take one down and put another one up. Probably three hundred dollars for having the truck to come out and having some money there for the hour and a half to do it. It's a state road in general where we have to do these, Fayette Street. State roads do require things like flaggers and, and traffic control, um, so that, uh, the personnel that's required to do that is usually three, one that goes up and down a truck and one on either side. So, um, having our own, having the ability to do this, I mean, this has been talked about, probably Frank's been here thirty years, probably all this thirty years, they've, they've been talking about it. But I know in the last six, they've, they've definitely talked about it. It's just difficult to get, it's difficult to get one of them. We've looked at used option, uh, and again, sometimes with used options, you're, you're getting somebody else's problem. It got to the point where it's problematic for them, and now we're taking that over. So what good is having one if we have to constantly fix it?
Right.
Ray, have you checked out that company that's over off of Concha Hocken Road? Where, 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 um, what is it? Lafayette comes in? There's a whole.
Yeah, so that's you, generally, Donella is, that, so they auctioned used ones out. Wes Concha Hocken did buy one from them years ago and used it on a limited basis, but Wes Concha Hocken just bought a new one, a brand new one. And I think from, from what we do as opposed to what a small municipality like that does, I mean, we were borrowing theirs. It's, you, you, how do you put a, how do you fix a flagpole? How do you fix the top of a flagpole? How do you change, you know, we're using the fire trucks, we're using things. It's really not, I, I, when I started, these guys were using ladders to hang flags on Fayette Street. Two guys were holding the ladder, and one guy was standing on the top ring, in, in order to do it. These are just not things that you, you can do anymore, and it's, it's. Yeah, it's just not, these are, these things, these are things that we can't do anymore, and we shouldn't have, we shouldn't be doing it. We don't really have an excuse to do it. Okay.
The next item is a tilt trailer. It's a equipment trailer, which we'll be able to tow on any of our pickup trucks or dump trucks, put our skid steer on. We have multiple attachments for that machine itself. And instead of running to, you know, we pick it up at Seventh Avenue, have to drive it all the way to First Avenue. That's twenty-five minutes because the thing's so slow. So we'd be able to put it on the trailer and with the attachments and bring it all to the job site and then pack it up.
Gotcha.
And also, it's a trailer, so it's used for many other things. We have several pieces of equipment we could use it for, we use it for all our special events as we use our other three or four trailers, the different, for all different things. But this is a great piece of equipment to have. And last is the crowd control barriers. Asking to have, I'm not even sure the exact amount, but several more.
Hundred, Frank.
Hundred, yeah, several, okay.
Several.
Several.
Okay.
Just to add to what we have, because we did find out that to do St. Patrick's Day, we run, we ran short. We had to borrow some from the county, which worked out, but it would be a lot better if we didn't have to deal with borrowing other people's stuff, so.
Given the events in the world, the crowd barriers now, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in quickly, are important, especially considering the emphasis that our community has placed on special events. And I believe, based off the feedback that we've received from St. Patrick's Day and Fun Fest and where we're going in terms of the trajectory, that people are going to want more since the ones we have now are successful, this is pivotal to health and safety. So I know that there have been questions in the past as it pertains to the crowd barriers, but in our eyes, from an administrative standpoint and an emergency management team, the health and safety and the lives of our community are much more important than twenty thousand dollars that can be, over time, spread out where the cost is basically a no-brainer.
We have a couple of examples of this, St. Patrick's Day before COVID. Chief Metz isn't here right now, but he was standing next to me cringing at the fact that all the kids were getting too close to the fire trucks and, and getting too close to the middle of the street. Now, remember, these, some of these fire trucks in this parade are nineteen forty fire trucks. Brakes are kind of almost optional at that point with those vehicles. So it's not like if somebody runs out in front of one of these, they're gonna be able to stop. But, you know, the overall picture here is that we had to borrow some from the county in order to, to complete this. And, and that then becomes, we have to have personnel to get them together, to get them over to the county. We have to have the county transfer them here. And, you know, the idea here is, we, 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 it was the first time we actually used them for the entire event, so we are gonna place them differently and have different, uh, different ways to do it. But, um, it was a completely error-free, incident-free scenario. We had nothing. And nothing is always a win when it comes to public safety. So we had, we've had that now in just about every incident that we've had, from the flood, to Fun Fest, to St. Patrick's Day parade, and, and even want to go there, but.
Stop, I'll go ahead.
If we talk about it, it's good. But the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, we have a little bit more forethought. We have a lot of people coming. We, the Fun Fest was probably the biggest Fun Fest, I'm sure it was the biggest Fun Fest by far we've had.
It was wonderful.
We might have had double the people there throughout the day. So we have to take this in consideration, and, and every week, somebody's coming in to do something else or want to do something else. So rather than try to find these things on a last-minute basis, we're set up now to be able to take these to a location. We did it for the Fourth of July for the first time, which actually worked out, really won. They're, they're very grateful that that was on.
Where, where do we store them?
At Seventh Avenue Garage.
Okay.
So they stack pretty much close together, and by using the forks of.
Yeah, the forks on.
Yeah, one of the, 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 the front-end loaders, you can go and lift them up. We put them on a, we can put them on a state, uh, the, um, the dumpster and take them to a location and then manually take them off. So it works out really good, it's a lot quicker, uh, and it's, it's definitely a lot safer. And again, I don't wanna, I, I think everybody knows how I feel about it. I really don't want to have an argument about it. I just think that this is the way we are, need to go here.
Okay.
Kudos.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing.
I like them better than the orange stuffed or the soapbox derby, too.
That had to get expensive, too.
Yeah, the, uh.
Hey, I remember the metal fences.
Everybody wants to borrow ours, absolutely. It's worked that well.
Oh, well, no. So wait, what do you have, I'm sorry, Steph?
Yeah, I think Ray's gonna handle it.
That's what I was, yes, going.
Okay.
Okay.
The lobby lights are next.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
I don't know nothing about them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
All right, so the administrative, administration building, we're kinda correcting some issues from when the building was first built. The lobby lights upstairs, they're octagon shaped, they were built, um, by someone. They use LED lights, but they use, uh, the older first-generation LED lights, and they're constantly burning out. There is no way to replace them. So, um, the, we, when we priced these out, these actually sound like a lot, but it's actually half, almost half of what it was when these were initially put in. So the, the new ones actually cost half of what the old ones cost. But there, we want to stay with an LED, and it has, uh, the, the ceiling up there is recessed and has to have a certain look, so there's very few things that you can do with it. So, uh, we've had a few different people look at it to try to come up with it. Rather than building a custom one, we did find someone who would be able to make something work with that, but, you know, it's a considerable amount of money. But it's something that wasn't really thought about when it first, when they first put it in.
Sounds good.
Access control system. So our access control system is a proprietary system from Siemens called Secure. And, uh, we're actually gonna look at a few different options with this. We might not use them again, but they're, they need, Secure needs a server upgrade, and, uh, rather than look at, we're gonna potentially look at completely going with another company. Because it's proprietary in every aspect, um, we basically pay two thousand dollars a year to have the right to fix it. So that, that's, that's the way, you know, that's the way it works. So, um, we want to, um, there's a lot of web-based stuff that's out there now. We, we went with a new company and, and we did the EOC and a few other places with the new company. And most of the things that you can do now, you can do from your cell phone, where this, um, any repairs or anything else, you have to do either from a computer inside this building or from the actual hardware inside the police station. So, uh, we want to look at changing that completely. Cameras, uh, you've seen cameras go up. They've been successful in stopping some issues, and the police department's been successful in, in, uh, handling some vandalism in Suckler Park and a few other places by the use of the cameras. Uh, I think we keep, need to keep going with this, and it's, again, a web-based system. We, um, we had internet now access and just, and we're all now at the A field and B field complete with internet, with access.
Do we have cameras outside of the A field?
We do not, we, we do not have cameras at the A field. This would be part of putting cameras at the A field.
This will include that?
Yes, so.
And it'll be the outside part, too, not just the inside?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just because the residents were asking for it.
Yeah, these, uh, these cameras are web-based, like, on my phone, every camera that we've put in, including the outside ones, are on the cell phone, mine and Stephanie's and a few others. And, um, the outside cameras at the front of the building can actually go three hundred and sixty degrees with the use of the cell phone. So, uh, they're very good, they're the newer generation, uh, and, um, it's the, the maintenance of them, and everything else is left to the company. So when we pay for a maintenance. So when we pay for a maintenance agreement with the company, that's what it means. That means they monitor, they know remotely that there's a problem with the camera. We don't have to wait to find out that this camera hasn't been working for a week or a month. They'll notify us and repair that.
I've kind of an off-the-wall question with that since it just came up with my residents and it was about the A field having the cameras. Do the police have access to those cameras? So if someone on that block calls about a car that is going up Harry Street instead of down at that corner, can the police see that from those cameras?
On the cameras that will be put into the A field? Yeah, well, it depends on what kind of cameras we put in there. If there's a specific, if we put a rotating camera in there, it will be able to do the inside of the A field and it would be able to read a license plate on Fayette Street.
That's the question because there... Not on Harry, though?
Yeah, it would, it would, it depends on where we put it. If we put it on the building. Where the... Yeah.
Right, I'm just asking if that, if it's there, if that's a potential for the police to be able to use it to ticket for that?
To ticket?
There's rules around that, isn't there?
They can't tick it off of it.
They can warn? Can you warn from that? Apparently it's a huge problem right there.
We would have to be able to identify the driver, which we would most likely not be able to do just from the license plate.
Okay.
Identify the car.
And the car owner.
Have a conversation with them.
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking is because when they brought it up, I was standing there talking to them and three cars went up Harry Street at 11th Avenue, three, in 10 minutes. That's why I'm asking.
We run a fine line with cameras.
That's the only reason I was, they asked about it.
That, you know, there's people who want them, people who don't want them and people who are in between. What we're able to do, this is a public building, it's our building, and as far as this is not an issue. But if it's in a public space, if the camera catches them doing something that they shouldn't be doing, I mean, the police do that all the time. The first place that they look when there's a crime is to see if there's any cameras.
The residents could probably...
The more we have strategic locations, I'm going to say, and I think we'll talk about this more on October 5th.
It was just coincidental when it came up and that was the discussion that I just had and actually saw it. So that's why I was asking, yeah. So I was a little shocked in 10 minutes, there were three cars, so. Go ahead.
The administration building, again, I think this is another thing that we're trying to rectify that may or should have been done earlier. And I think, from my perspective, I never even noticed it. So if you drive down Fayette Street in the borough of Conshohocken, you don't know where the administration building is. And it's pretty awkward when you start having events here like we've had. We've had 50 people for some training here and they say, "I'm in front of, I'm at Fourth Avenue, but where's the building at?" There's the YMCA and Tower Health, but where's the Borough Building? So I don't know, I don't, I don't think, neither one of us were part of the discussion on why there was nothing identifiable in an area that is clearly able to be used to identify the Borough Hall, why there wasn't something put there. So again, I think it's clearly a good idea to, for people to know where the administration building is in the borough of Conshohocken. Everybody who gets, actually gets in here understands that the building is a great building. But, yeah, I mean, and I'm not joking, we had, we've had people come in and basically had no idea on how to get here. They did U-turns on Fourth Avenue and finally saw the sign on the brick.
Because you can see coming out.
So this building and this project is a perfect and a very successful example of an adaptive reuse of an existing facility along Main Street in a borough in the state of Pennsylvania that was also the recipient of a RACP fund through the state, which was a redevelopment grant in essence. And I think that we should be, we should be very proud of this building and the services it provides to the community. So for me, what Ray and I have discussed, I think it's important that our name is prominent on our building. And so while it may seem small and insignificant, I think it's important that we're proud of this being kind of the face of the services that you provide to the community. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Steph.
Any questions on that?
Nice elevator pitch.
So the nitrogen generator is, again, something that wasn't considered, I guess, when this building was built. The sprinkler systems around the building is pretty extensive. This is a concrete building, condensation is a big problem, hot to cold, hot to cold, hot to cold. And we've noticed that in our, when we've had some of our sprinkler tests on, that some of the areas have started to rust inside the pipes. So rather than have a continuous problem and have to do a replacement inside this building, which would be hugely expensive, the nitrogen machine basically prevents that oxidation from happening inside the pipes, which then would form the rust. It prevents it long-term. So this is basically a generator and it's a generator that'll remove or change some of the air in the system to nitrogen, especially in the dry system, the area in the parking garage, which is constantly having an issue. So they actually photographed the inside of the pipes to show us where the rust and the oxidation was. So I don't, I think that's another thing that, you know, it just wasn't considered at the time in a concrete building. And they don't make, in general, they don't make concrete buildings anymore. So it's not a huge issue in most buildings, but in this one, it would be problematic. They'd pretty much have to rip everything up in order to change it. The B field, I think we've already talked about that once before. So those are basically the renderings of the B field. If there's any questions on that, the only thing that may change, and hopefully for the good, is the pricing. The pricing was a budget pricing based on the numbers at the time. We'll see what that ends up when we actually sit down and start deciding exactly what we want. But I'm hoping that that would be a little less than what the budget is.
And just to clarify from a financing point, that that full $435,000, which potentially could decrease, is coming directly out of your Park and Rec Impact Fund. So another item that will not be funded through your capital fund and/or tax dollars.
So the pocket park, the two pocket parks for the Fridge Lodge and for the Methodist Church, out of these two, obviously, the actual, the Methodist Church one has changed the rendering. It's changed pretty substantially now. But the Masons, the biggest cost that I think initially will be incurred with that is having the parking lot in the area around the parking lot taken care of. We just did a blacktop number today, I think we got it back, and it's still very, very high. It's in the 30% to 40% higher than it was a year ago range. So we'll see where that ends up once the blacktop season comes in, in April, May of 2023. But that's, the rest of this park, I'm hoping that a lot of the work that's going to be done is initially going to be done to the trees, removal of some of the dead trees, re-landscaping the area, putting in some lighting and putting in a pervious paving system throughout the front of the Mason building throughout the grass portion of it to be able to have a walkway and put in some seating. I mean, in general, that's what we're talking about. I think just improving the landscaping, the trees and how the appearance is of that is going to be exponentially better than what it is now. And we can go from there.
Are we taking over the porch also or no?
Yes, they did. It was, they asked us actually if we would be interested in that and I think it makes sense from my perspective, from the liability portion for them, because people are going to use it anyway. So we will and we'll do some work there, too. But with that part, you don't really know until you get your hands on it. The rest of it, I mean, we keep looking at it and keep looking at it. It just doesn't, I just don't see the big financial impact of that. I think we can do a lot of the work. And once it's done and done to the point where it's finished and the maintenance part of it is easy, something that has in the past not been considered. Not only do you want these things to be done, but you want them to be done and be able to be maintained.
Easily.
Easily, not have to go through any special process in order to do it. But we've even taken some information from the EOC, EOC.
EAC.
EAC. And doing some plannings and things like that there that I think will work out. So I don't really think that the numbers are going to be high for the Methodist Church at all. I think this is going to be another situation where we're mostly going to do pervious pavers, a tree, some landscaping and go from there. I don't think it's, again, but right now, I wish I could tell you that the, you know, an accurate number with any of this stuff, but it's just, they're just not out there.
Yeah, I understand.
And the other thing is public service, for public services, Marywood Park House, the new roof part. So this is just a discussion portion of it. It needs a new roof and I think the people are going to have to, the people that are part of the Park House Committee and the council are going to have to decide what they want that to look like. That's the first part, because that's the most expensive part.
So Ray, you think all of the roof that's on there now is going to need to come off?
If you want this to look like some of the renderings that we've gotten in the past, you know, without, let's say without the front porch that was put on there. There's specific kind of tiles. If you want to see what that process and that expense is, go to St. Mary's Church. They're doing it right now. They're using a shingle that looks like an older slate type of shingle.
I think that's what a lot of people are doing now, right?
Yes, but it is expensive. It is expensive. It's supposed to last 50, 60 years.
And it's not expensive as the slate?
Well, the slate is more labor-intensive. The material, yeah, but, yeah, slate is more labor-intensive. This is more, you're going to have a material cost for this. But if you want to do this and you want to do it right, you have to decide on whether you want, you know, you could have the peaks with tin on them, copper. Those are the things, those are the materials that were used in that era. And then if you want to paint it to that era, all those things are going to drive the expense of that. So I think the decisions for that, once they're made, then we can give you an actual cost of what those will be. Yeah, you're...
There's a lot of it.
You're really, yeah, I mean, if you want this to look, there's all sorts of things you can do here. But the extension part of this, the part that was the rental property in the back, I mean, you can even reface that and have that look similar to what the rest of it looks like. But the roof itself is going to be a decision that you have to make. If you just don't, if the look isn't what you care about, then you put a 30-year shingle on it, you get a commercial-grade 30-year shingle that looks like you want it to look color-wise, but it's not going to match the era that this building was built in. None.
How much time is left on that? That was my, was going to be my question, like how urgent is this?
If the hurricane that's going through Florida right now went in a different direction, then that could have made, that could make your decision for you right there. I mean, it really is an unknown at this point. Once they've lasted, this lasted well beyond, my house was built in 1925 and it has one roof on it. And it was a slate roof that they took off of it. It lasted 50, 60 years. This has lasted that long.
Yeah, my neighbors just came up.
So just like anything else, a hot water heater, if you wait after, if you wait 10 years in one month, you may have waited too long.
So I think for our purpose of adding this on here is that we know it's going to have to happen eventually. I think that, like Ray said, we have to have further conversations, especially as it kind of ties into all of the architectural studies that we've already done, how it ties into the Friends of Conshohocken Parks and what that ends up looking like. We wanted to give you a Bog Park figure so you knew kind of where we are today and then go from there as we move into the future. But in terms of other items on the public services list that was originally provided to you in your capital packets, the street sweeper has been removed. Again, that was an item that we felt it was important to give you what that financial impact would be. We are not considering it for this fiscal year, but keep that in mind as we go. If it's an initiative that you want us to add back on. And then Marywood Park House roof is the same, is in the same ballpark, that it's going to come. You're going to have to figure out between the trust and the operating and capital for, with council, how those three entities work together to fund that. And then we already, Ray did a very nice presentation at your voting session on the Second Avenue Monument Rehab, so you know that that number is in the million-dollar range. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even know that you had that slide.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's good, that's basically where it's going to be. If we look at the infrastructure of Second Avenue, that's going to be the big number. So we're probably, we're looking at over a million dollars with that. But we're looking at some unique ways to try to fund it. It's not just going to...
I'm sorry, Ray, will we have money coming in, like Park and Rec Impact fees in 2023 also?
You will have, well, it depends on whether certain developments move forward. So yes, the impact fees for your current development are in. If there are any other developments that get approved and have approvals over the course of the 2023 cycle, then yes, you'll have additional dollars come in, in that capacity, that can go to any park or recreational facility.
Sorry, Ray, go ahead.
No, and I think we've talked about the Elm Street Garage actually last year. And it is, we're in the same circumstance with that. The Elm Street Garage could last 10 years or it could have to be replaced right away. Because we have, it's a roof that has, you know, it was caught on fire in the '50s. So it's actually, some of the trusses up there actually still have the same burn marks on them. But it leaks, doesn't leak to the point where it's, the garage is unusable. But it does leak at certain points. We do have one person in town that knows where those leaks are and he constantly is able to repair them. But there is a point where that's going to have to stop. So if that's going to be a facility that you're going to keep using for years to come, that investment will be, again, between $50,000 and $100,000 to replace that roof. It's a rounded roof with trusses. Trusses basically means if it catches on fire, the fire department won't go in and do anything, it just catches on fire.
So you're saying discussion only, so it's not something we're discussing for 2023?
No, those are items that we just want to have on your radar. We're not presenting them to you for consideration for your capital for 2023. Your full public service request for the budget is actually $910,106, $910,106.28 not including those items for discussion. The shuttle, we are actively working on rolling out the survey portion with GVF, so that's coming shortly. But I think it's important for us to highlight areas of operation, facilities, services, needs that you have to keep in mind as you're thinking about your next list, basically.
Can I ask you two quick questions? What are you currently using the Elm Street Garage for right now?
Everything. Yeah, it houses, it's the offices, it's their training room, it's their locker room. So it's used for everything. When they did the Seventh Avenue Garage, they built it as a pole barn, basically. So it cannot be heated, it cannot be... So it cannot be heated, it cannot be air conditioned. Yeah, so, um, there's things that you, you, I mean, you, really, it's just basically like a big shed. Yep, and you can't do anything to it. Um, you have to build an entirely new structure. So at some point, should that conversation be had? Yes, it should be had. It's, you have a, you have a public works garage that obviously with more employees and more requirements that state and everything else is going to require, you gonna, you're going to outgrow that facility. But how, how you want to address that, um, you know, to, at this point right now, even the gas pumps, you couldn't replace that. The front gas pumps in the, the, they're too close to the sidewalk and the street, so under the new codes, you could not replace those gas pumps. So the second they go, we are, we are going out to a third party for gas.
How much acreage do we have up in the seventh?
How much? It's over an acre, about an acre and a half. Uh, there's, there's, yeah, I mean, if you, you could take the garage that's at Sixth Avenue right now and put four of them on that spell.
Okay.
And then, um, where did you come with the hundred fifteen thousand dollars to where you were with Park House? Was that just the ballpark, or is it just an idea?
For the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we reached out to several different roofers. Again, at that number, it's going to have to be a bid number. So, um, everybody was coming in, in the seventy or eighty thousand dollar range last year.
That, yeah, that was going to say, that was well over a year ago we did that, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, if you just, just do the general numbers, even if you added eighteen percent on the low end, that's where you would kind of be.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ray for public services capital? If not, we're going to move right into emergency management.
Okay, um, so the two big things in emergency management, this is, uh, the, they're both going to take a little bit of explanation. So, um, the first one is the A, A, E O C radio system. Um, so it's not a radio system in a sense, it's a dispatch center. So, um, our E O C does not have the ability to dispatch. So if we had to do it, um, Dave has done it a few times, uh, it's rather unique. You have to have two radios here and there and try, so to have a legitimate E O C, you have to have the dispatch point. So one of the things we looked into is, just like we do with everything, if it's, will we have a second way to use this radio system? And the answer is yes. So the radio system is actually, could be a backup for the police department. So if the radio system in the county went, like nine one one did last week when the CAD went down.
It went down?
Yeah, so it, it happens occasionally. Sometimes they talk about it, sometimes they don't. It happened in Philadelphia. Um, so if it were to go down, and if it were to go down or get busy in a huge incident throughout the county, if we had a tornado go through like they did in Upper Dublin, then we would be able to self-dispatch from the emergency management center for an emergency situation. The police department would also be able to dispatch, and they would then be able to dispatch on a regular basis if they so chose, chose to do. Some municipalities are now moving away from the county. Not all, some, some have looked at, at what it, because the county's running into the same issues that everybody else is running into. Uh, they're very busy and they're shorthand. And, um, the some of, so some, uh, some police departments have looked at, uh, moving into that, moving it back to self-dispatch. Some police departments have never left it, but they're far and few between. Um, but just like anything else, things tend to be cyclical. Everybody moved in one direction and now they're kind of moving in the other and putting, uh, putting more emphasis on the municipalities themselves to handle these scenarios, these big scenarios. So I did have a conversation with the chief about this, um, and I brought in somebody from Motorola, who did Springfield Townships. We went over to Springfield Townships and looked at theirs. Now, theirs is five years old, five years old. Believe it or not, it's annotated already. But you can't look at these things from the bottom line anymore. You, you can't, there's certain, you can't buy from certain countries. You have to make sure the parts are from, not from certain countries, because this is a dispatch, uh, center. And we're going to be getting information from the county. And I, I believe there is an approval process from the county too with this, once, once it's all said and done, where the county would officially call this, the county would officially call this the E O C and we would be dispatching from it. So someone like Kelly from the police department, um, Bobby Joe, somebody that would be trained to do it, could actually be in, uh, could dispatch fire, police, and ambulance during a large scale emergency. It's, again, something that's newer for municipalities, but, uh, I think we've all, people who've been part of the, the emergency management have realized that the county wants more and more emphasis to be put on the local municipalities to handle their scenarios. And with our increase in population, they're not, the county's not increasing their personnel and their abilities to handle us. They want us to increase everything to handle there. So we're looking at it, um, and when we looked at it, it made sense. The system that, uh, he introduced to us is actually not the top of the line system. It's not what the county has, it's a, it's a, and it, but it's not a baseline system. It's something that is going to be web-based eventually and we'll be able to make a, a lot of changes to it. So, um, it would be something that would get five, six, seven years before a major change had to be done to it.
Okay.
Any questions on any of that?
Add to that, Ray?
Hmm?
Add to that.
Yeah.
So, uh, several times, at least several times a year, the county goes to priority radio traffic. So they have a major incident like Ray talked about with the tornado and-
Just because it's important, can you go up to the podium so that we capture you while the tornado's starting?
And if everybody doesn't know, not only, Dave's not only a sergeant in the police department, but he's a deputy emergency management coordinator.
So several times a year, uh, the county goes to priority radio traffic when they have a major incident. Uh, when we go to priority radio traffic, the county only dispatches priority calls. Uh, so what that means for every other call for the police department, um, and the fire department is someone has to sit there in, in the police vehicle or the fire truck and, and monitor the M D T, which is the computer in the car. And then they will send the, the nine one one call takers will send the call out over the computer, but not dispatch it. So for the police department, that means someone has to sit in the car all the time, right? So if we're out on a call or we're going call to call, we don't necessarily always see these calls come up. For the fire department, no one's there unless they actually get the call, right? So they don't actually dispatch that call sometimes because it's not a priority call. So, um, what has happened in the past and what Ray was speaking about earlier was someone has to sit there and watch that. So me or one of the other sergeants. And then when we have a large, uh, event here, uh, we have to dispatch the fire company too. So currently what we're doing now is we're just, we're, we're bringing a laptop into our E O C and we're dispatching with a portable radio. So now we're talking on two portable radios. Uh, we've, we've made a, a, a huge investment in this E O C, and it's wonderful, but we need to make that final step that we can actually get functional, because it's a concrete building and working on a portable radio, uh, is, you know, it's, it's not always going to cut it. So what we'll have the ability to do is we will be, uh, in line with the county. We will have that county software. They'll be able to push that down. We push a button and say, okay, we're live, we're going to go. They push down the calls. We'll still have to have someone here to push that call out to the fire department or the police department, but it doesn't have to be someone sitting in a car somewhere and talking to the fire department or me calling Tim at home saying, hey, you guys got a call, you got to come in here. Um, and we'll be able to have that CAD information, which is computer aided dispatch. We'll be able to log all that and we can direct, uh, a lot of times, the, one of the issues that we run into is how do we communicate these calls with Pico, right? So we got a major storm, uh, we're constantly in touch with Pico, right? We want to, uh, log all these poles and wires that are down, right? So with the computer aided software, the county actually will have a, a Pico rep, uh, either at their substation, or if it's a large scale event, they'll bring Pico right to, uh, the county dispatch center. So we'll be able to push that information right back up to Pico also. So it, it really is the next and probably the final step in completing that E O C process.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the things that Dave was kind enough to do one time, I won't tell you when it was, but he ran a secondary E O C out of his living room. He sat in his living room with radios and dispatched calls, because that's what we had. Now, we didn't have a facility yet, but now we don't have to worry about it.
Did that, did that trigger the facility?
When the space remains available, yes.
Yeah, it made sense.
It did, yes, thank you.
And no questions with that? I'll move on to the flood gauge. So the, the flood gauge is something we, we were talking about, but we never thought that we would be able to get one. Uh, but we did, we met with the U S Geological Survey. Uh, they came here twice and, um, they thought it was a great idea. They, they actually, they were like, they were completely surprised at what we had going on here. And that's not unusual, it shouldn't be unusual for anybody. If any, anybody hasn't been here for ten years, this is not what it was. But they went down there, they, they drove around, they saw, so, uh, saw what was going on and they gave us an education on what's going on in our area. And it, to have one of these meters, what, what would hap, what happened the last storm is the easiest way to identify it. We were looking at information that we were getting on our phones and, um, that particular flood was supposed to be at nineteen feet, around six inches, and end. So we had information that it was going to end. So when it, when the information comes that it's going to peak at nineteen feet, six inches, the fire department, police department, emergency management starts deploying their personnel in a different way. You know, you could start sending people home, you could start talking about taking stuff down. And then all of a sudden, ah, well, it's going to go to twenty-two feet. Well, twenty-two feet is a different story, especially down there. Um, I think since Tim was here, he's been here the longest on the fire department, he never had something at twenty-three feet. Um, so, yeah, so now you're bringing everybody back and so at one point they said, ah, it's going to be done at twenty-two, twenty-three feet. Make a long story short, it ended at twenty-eight point six was the top, so five feet higher than that. So, um, this will help in that. It's not the secure all, but we're going to have better information, they're going to have better information, the U S Geological Study, which is part of this. Uh, because every year they update these, this equipment and they take all the information and they put it into their system. At one point, they are going to have an app that we will have access to and it will not only tell you the water rise, but where the water will end up on the properties around that area. So once everything is built down there, we'll actually be able to see on this app where the water on Washington Street will end up and the height of that water.
Is it just the one gauge or do you want to have two?
The, the, um, the meters? One, it'll be attached to the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be right at the bridge, which is, they, they ever, they already looked at the spot. They, they're ready to go January first. They want to get this in, they want to start gathering information as quickly as possible. They, they gave us a lot of, uh, a, a lot of information that we didn't, uh, know about, um, about different, uh, outfalls from different areas, different, uh, streams and creeks that are going into the Skooka River and might be causing some of that. We invited Lower Merion Township to the meeting. Lower Merion Township had their fire marshal here, uh, and, uh, assistant director of public works was here. Um, and they've actually looked at, um, having the U S G A go into, to Lower Merion to some of their areas that flood constantly and put metering systems in there. So, so it, it worked out really well for us. Um, White Marsh Township was part of this. Uh, the initial install of this is going to be on Kancha Hakan. We can have conversations later.
White Marsh is not doing anything.
Yeah, well, we can have conversations later as to how this is going to go forward with the upkeep of this, with the other municipalities. But, um, we have the most concentrated area now and the biggest population along this portion of the Skooka River. I don't know what's going to happen in Bridgeport, but I don't know the numbers, but I, I don't foresee that being as much as Kancha Hakan. And, um, so I think we have the most to gain out of this information and we've established a real good relationship with them. They were, like I said, we want to, they, we have all their cell phone numbers. They're, they're gathering and giving us information anytime we want, like, and they want to start right away. These are, uh, to say these are, these are very motivated individuals that work for, for that, for, for, for the U S G A. They, they really, they, uh, they're really good at what they do and they're very information oriented. They want to get it out to the people. In fact, they want to have, uh, a few classes for our fire personnel. They want to, they even want to have classes with the public to, to inform them what's going on. So, um, we think it's- To tell you what we did in order to gain, um, the, the last time we tried to meter the, the, or get the heights of, of the ri, river, uh, Tim and Steve went out on a boat and put chalk marks on one of the, uh, poles that are at in front of the rowing center. That's how we got heights. So I think we should probably get away from that.
This would be a little more accurate, Ray. Just a little more helpful.
Yeah, we want to just get away from doing that, so.
So.
That's all I have on that, if there's any questions on that, anybody?
I don't have any questions. Anybody have any questions? No, we're good.
Okay, with that?
With that, we've completed our capital budget presentation. So I will, will roll into Ray's line items and then we will go through the worksheet for the capital budget.
Okay.
So that's, uh, this is, should be very quick. Uh, the vehicle fuel, we have already talked about.
Give us a page, Ray.
I'm sorry?
Page.
So you're starting on page nine of twenty-one.
Thank you.
Which one are we talking? These are the line items that were over. Yeah, so, um, thank you. Uh, vehicle fuel, page nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so vehicle fuel we already discussed. Building supplies, uh, again, uh, we're just basing most of this stuff on the increases that everybody else is, is incurring. So, um, where normally you would be the two to five percent, now you're seeing increases of eighteen and twenty and thirty percent on certain items. So, um, and this has happened, this, again, has not happened from budget year to budget year. This happened in the middle of the budget year. So it, it, we couldn't have had, uh, any, uh, we couldn't have had any accurate numbers for this. Vehicle repair and maintenance comes down to the same thing. Parts and availability to parts and having someone be able to fix a vehicle outside of our mechanic is becoming extremely difficult. You do not know, did not know about it, but we had two trash trucks break down Monday, two. Never happened in the time that you were here. Um, but, uh, we were lucky to be able to borrow one from another municipality. Uh, they've, they've stepped up and helped us, uh, a couple of times on this. But again, getting parts for these vehicles and getting them back on the road is becoming more and more expensive and, uh, getting mechanics to do the work has become more and more expensive. Um, we are looking to, we're looking at a grant for new, uh, trash truck, uh, recycling truck in twenty twenty-three and we probably will be looking at a new trash truck in twenty twenty-three. But something more amicable to the new process that we're going to have as far as trash and recycling pickup.
Okay.
General repairs and maintenance, again, um, we're just looking at increases over the entire spectrum. The warranties and service agreements, I told you about cameras that we have installed. We also from the flood learned that a lot of the, the, um, fire, uh, fire alarms and, uh, alarm systems that we had down at the public works garage were no longer code compliant. So, um, they weren't part of an insur, because they weren't part of the insurance problem because they actually, they worked, they just weren't code compliant. Uh, again, having a building like that, um, and not having code compliant fire systems in it, we decided to upgrade and, um, those upgrades now include warranties and they include, um, um, monitoring, better monitoring. See, the, and the camera systems that you see throughout the building, they all, that's part of this too. So the warranties and the service agreement, the increases on them are because of those. Holiday decorations, again, I guess that speaks for itself. It's just that L E D lights were more than they were a, a year ago. It's just that LED lights were more than they were a year ago.
All right, you are moving to page.
I got.
Over to page 30 of 21. So that is just fuel, so we're gonna skip.
Fuel again?
You already talked about it. So you're flipping to page 14.
14 is emergency, the emergency management part. So the increases that you see in emergency management, that year, those, emergency management now, we're kind of putting everything into that line item. So when we have an incident, COVID, anything else, that's moving into emergency management. We really didn't have anywhere to put any of those line items. They didn't fit in anything else. So now that we have emergency management light on, we move it to, we're moving it to there. So things like exercises and stuff like that that have for two years not happened, they're going to happen. The last one we did, the last large one we did was at the elementary school.
Right.
Where we had the helicopters come in, we had all that.
Right, we did have another one planned and then COVID hit.
We did, we had one planned in June.
I forget what that was.
It was closing the Madison Fort Bridge.
That's.
For, for an accident on the Madison Fort Bridge. And that was gonna involve Lower Merion and the county and every. So that is in the planning stages. Now, we just had a meeting with the county a couple weeks ago and the county wants a year to plan anything now.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so we, we can't wait to hear. We have to take it upon ourselves to try to do everything we can in-house to plan it out, to get it all done, and then invite the county to the meet, and to, to the incident, rather than have the county plan it out first. That's the way we, we have to handle it. You know, in a year, we'll have 30% more population here. We can't really wait for that.
Turn to page 15.
Vehicle fuel again, vehicle repair and maintenance again. Vehicle fuel, uniforms, just the cost, the general cost of that. Vehicle repair and maintenance, and I think.
I think probably an important one to hit is 432000, which is on page 17.
Yeah, so again, that's, salt, we just got the Coast Star's numbers for salt. Salt has increased by about 18% and then we have the delivery charges on top of that. So it's, it's right around 18 to 20%. So if we don't have a large, if we don't have a big winner like we did last year, we're okay. But if we do, we have to, we're gonna spend everything we spent this year plus.
So just, you're on page 17 and it's account number 01432000. It's not highlighted.
Okay.
It's above, you're just looking at.
Above highway maintenance.
Highway maintenance.
So sorry, is that, is that price directly related to salt then or also other?
Both, salt, delivery, any equipment. So if we, if a snow plow breaks down and there's, or a hydraulic system breaks down, all of that is generally, is put into that. So if you look at that number in other municipalities, it's huge. We're base, we, because we have good equipment, we basically keep a low baseline. So it's not just salt, we do have other things that we put in there. PA 1 call, PA 1 call is calling whenever you, whenever you're digging, whether that's on private property, public property, you have to call PA 1 in order to do. So this basically is because of all the building we have here. So every time anybody wants to do any work here, we have to send our people out to do the PA 1 calls. It has to be done. It's very high, we, we will get fined $500 if there's an incident. So they've really increased how they enforce this. We actually, what we did is because we wanted to take some liability off the borough for this, we hired a third-party company in order to do this. The best example I can give you of what these things could cost is Verizon hit a fiber optic line doing work on Washington Street and the line went to a finance company and the finance company wanted $100,000 an hour in reparations for that.
To be clear.
Because they hit, they hit this fiber optic line, so.
And it was only a fiber optic line.
Somebody has to do that.
Could have been a gas line, could have been anything. Thank you.
Yeah, so we have a good company. Frank set it up with them and, and they're, they're, they're coming out. I don't even, I don't think the sewer authority is doing any of their own stuff now.
I was gonna say, the sewer authority was looking at some other alternatives. They currently do it internally.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, so three o'clock in the morning, if there's an emergency, they put out a PA 1 call and you only have a few hours to respond to that. So it's best that a third-party company is handling it for us.
And then you're turning to page 20.
The, yeah, I'm sorry, say that again?
Page 20.
Page 20, got it.
So that, that's basically the, the cost increases to do. Instead of our people doing things like the Marywood or Suckliff Park, the bathrooms there, the third-party company is gonna be doing them from now on. They were, we were going back and forth on that. We're gonna have them do it. That way we can hold them accountable when they don't do it. Okay?
Sorry. Sanitation services, what does that specifically apply to? Just like to restrooms or more than that?
By restroom, we're talking, they're, they're doing the concession stand area. They do the community center bathrooms. And they, oh, the Afield. I'm sorry, that's another one that they do. Those, yeah, and the, and I'm sorry, and the porta potty costs are in that too. But the, the costs of having these things taken care of went up a lot during COVID period. Because there weren't a lot of people that do them. And there's, it's, it's still high, but it has come down a little bit. We don't have to use as much, we don't, they don't have to be treated as much as they did during COVID. But we're still gonna be looking at an increase in that. There's no, no doubt.
Okay.
Some of these numbers, if you, we took a lot of things upon ourselves that were not being done before. So we really have a baseline. We were kind of guessing at some of these numbers. So now we have a better baseline. Then we got hit with COVID, that went up. So instead of this being a 220% increase, it's a 100% increase.
Right.
Any other questions for Ray or Frank on public services, capital or operational line items?
No?
Okay. I'm going to shift into any additional, additional line items in your general fund expenditures that have increases and they're grouped, so it should be pretty quick. If you've turned to page 6 of 21 and you look at the 400 legislative body group, 40210, which is council and mayoral operating expenses. So that was increased to account for the populate, population increase and the potential need to provide elected officials to provide more services to more constituents. 40317 was increased. We are utilizing Foster Digital for our recording and media needs right now. They have some innovative ideas for the future of kind of our operations. So we are retaining them in a greater capacity, so that reflects that increase. And then 40460 was increased, conferences just across the board. And they are important that we have our elected officials represent the borough of Kancha Hakan. Otherwise, we don't have a voice in what's going on from a state perspective. So we need attendance and they're just more expensive. It's more expensive for travel, for lodging, for food, et cetera, so that was bumped to reflect those costs.
Thank you.
If you turn the page to, to 403310, the tax collector, as we increase our EIT, which we are expecting a significant increase on your revenue side moving into 2023, their fee increases percentage, it's percentage-based. So that's the, the increased percentage there. 404314 on the same page, legal fees solicitor. You'll see that I'm beginning to make a shift from special counsel to our actual solicitor and his team. We're moving away from needing special counsel for special reasons and utilizing our solicitor at a greater capacity. So you're going to see this line item over encumbered and I'm going to use the next three years to kind of ballpark what that number should actually be. But we're gonna incrementally increase it as we go. If you turn to page 3. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on it up there, I'm sorry. If you slip, slip to page 8 of 21, line items 408, you'll see increases for engineering fees, planning and architectural fees, traffic engineering general. So they are to account for increased services, but also inflation in terms of hourly rates. It also includes consultant fees for our main street overlay as well as some, some fees with GVF for the potential shuttle and the communications that are involved with that. And then if you turn to page 9, 409317 is the real estate tax expense. So this is increased, it could decrease, but we have expanded our share of this building. And so with that comes a slight increase in costs. And that will potentially also further increase with, depending on what happens with this building and its structure. 409350, so all of the insurance line items, which are gonna be the next whole group. So 409350, 410350, 411350, 413350, 430350 and 452350. So they are all property liability and umbrella, so they are our property and liability insurances. And they are split across all of our departments based off of the percentage of operating budget that pertains to that department. So we do a calculation to determine the full cost of our property and the liability insurance to determine what percentages get allocated to each operating, operation, dependent on their total share of the operating budget. So you'll see increases across the board. There was a 20% increase for our property and liability insurance. And if you look, and that is through dividend, so that is through a trust. So we probably are much better off than most are going to be, so, because we have that pool sharing. But unfortunately, we have to absorb those costs, which we've been able to do successfully. Any questions on those line items? Any other questions on your general fund operating line items, because that does close that portion of this meeting? All good?
Thank you, Steph.
Great. Okay, Brittany, can you bring up the capital worksheet if you don't mind? Everybody okay? Do you need a break or do you want to push through? Push through, it is. Okay, we are, just to do a quick explanation of how our worksheet works. So department directors turn in their capital budgets in July. You get the capital budgets and all of the supporting materials in July to review up until tonight. We then create a list, which basically lays out the department, which, what I call the department wish lists. We then move them over to a department priority list and that happens through conversations with the department head and myself, based off of funding sources. I then, prior to submitting it to you for the budget meeting, fill out the borough manager recommended projects based, again, on available funds. And then this evening, what we will do is we will determine what the council capital budget item list is for fiscal year 2023. So that is how the worksheet works. We move, right now, we're gonna move from the borough manager column to the council column. I'm gonna start briefly with the funding sources that you have available to you. So moving into fiscal year 2023, you have roughly 3.8, I'll put 3.8 million dollars available to expend in capital funds. And that is made up of a traffic impact fee from 400 West Elm, which is in the amount of 320,000. The park and rec impact fee, which is, you have available $975,000. You have a potential capital fund balance forward. I was explaining Tina's question earlier, where there's basically a fund balance at the end of the year of approximately 1.4 million dollars. You have payment from Matson Mill for your traffic improvements for their land development of $175,000. You have a scheduled capital reserve transfer in fiscal year 2022, which my recommendation would be instead of moving it to your capital reserve, you move it straight into capital. So that would increase your fund balance by 500,000. And then the last funding sources, I would be recommending that you pull $500,000 from your capital reserve fund to fully, to fund your capital budget moving into 2023. So that totals $3,870,000 that you would utilize to fund your projects. And I am recommending, based off the presentations this evening and those funds being available, that we fund all projects presented with the removal of the street sweeper, which we already discussed. The removal of the emergency boat, which we already discussed. And keeping on the back burner of those items that we have brought to your attention, but have not made a priority this evening. So that being the Second Avenue Monument, the Marriott Park House roof and the new roof at the East Elm Street Garage. Where that gets us to in terms of funding is a deficit of approximately $27,000, so we are close. I can tell you right now that what wasn't factored into these numbers was the $60,000 grant that we received for the Suckliff Park Trail. And then there will be some movement as we get more concrete numbers off of some estimates we had to provide as placeholders. So for example, when I presented to you some of the placeholders that we have in the budget as it pertains to engineering or traffic engineering, a lot of those items are grants that could come to fruition. So if they do not come to fruition, then that money will not be expended. So bottom line is, we are basically presenting to you this evening a capital budget that you can fully fund. The numbers right now may be showing a deficit of 27,000, but I believe you'll make up that 27,000 between now and the end of the year. And we'll be able to concretely say to you, when you go to approve your budget in December, that your capital budget will be fully funded going into 2023. So our recommendation this evening would be that you take that list minus those items and approve them for moving into 2023. Now, that number is larger than you have done over the course of the last three years. It's more significant. But I think that as you move through your park program, as you move through your main street overlay, as you move through your population increase, as you move through utilizing your workforce the way they should be utilized and utilizing their skills and focusing on professional development, that this list supports and emphasizes all of those goals that you've laid out over the course of this entire fiscal year. So if you are inclined, if there's any discussion items, we will clearly answer them this evening. But that is our recommendation, moving through this budget cycle.
Does anybody have any questions for Steph?
Stephanie, the 320, Equus.
Yes.
Is that park and rec? What is that, 320?
That is specific to traffic. It has to be road. Equus has other park and rec.
Right.
Which sits in the impact fund. And that's not touched in that 975,000 that I was talking about. So our, our intent with the park and rec impact fee that we received from Equus is we wanna see that development complete and see what those public amenities provide to the community that are associated with the development, because there's open space and recreational area that is required of the developer to install, to then determine what we should utilize that contribution to the borough for. We don't want to add an amenity to the community now and then kind of duplicate efforts. So let them complete, see what that amenity that's already being provided does for that area of our community, to then determine what you would utilize those dollars, which are going to be earmarked and saved until that development is complete, to determine perhaps what happens at Haynes and Slavati is probably the perfect example.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was some portion of it. We talked about this before.
Yeah, there is, I believe, in the hundred to hundred and twenty thousand dollar range that Equus provided in park and rec. That is not included in any of the funds that I'm suggesting you utilize to fund the budget. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not buying down all of our funds. We still have funds available for future. So it's not like we're spending everything.
You, right now, as of today, a projected fund balance for your capital reserve is approximately five point nine million dollars. I'm suggesting you use five hundred thousand of that.
Say that again.
In your capital reserve fund, which is separate from capital.
Right.
You have approximately forecasted for a fund balance at the end of twelve thirty-one of 2022, have approximately five point eight million dollars sitting in that fund. I'm suggesting you utilize five hundred thousand of that five point eight million to fund your capital product, projects on top of the majority of the funding source, which is coming from outside entities. So to answer Tina's question, yes, you have millions of dollars that are sitting in a reserve fund. So in the case that Ray's emergency management team has a catastrophic event or an emergency situation or we have to address the roof at Elm Street, you still have reserve funds in place. You're not depleting your reserves to fund these projects.
Is there a formula that recommends how much should be kind of kept in that reserve?
No, there's not like a gaspy standard, like an accounting, a general accounting standard from municipal governments in terms of what your percentages are. I think that there's thresholds that we, that we have become comfortable with in terms of gauging when we've hit a threshold of when it's no longer fiscally responsible to keep that many, that much reserves in-house. And this is, this list, what we are on the precedent of in terms of where our community is going. It is a strong recommendation to fund. I think that you're, to fund your capital, to approve your operational increases and get us moving in the direction where we will be set up to provide the quality service we currently provide to our community when we welcome our new neighbors in the next eighteen months.
So the one point four million, that is left over from last year's capital budget?
That is accumulated in your fund balance. So in your capital fund, you have a fund balance. That fund balance, based off of whatever was not expended last year or potentially won't be expended this year, is what is sitting and for, able for you to use in 2023.
Okay. So that is separate from the five point eight?
That is correct.
And then, so what you're saying is we're just not going to add that five hundred thousand dollars to the next year?
Right. So what we do, what we, what we do at the end of the year is we transfer into our reserve funds. So from general.
Right.
Which is all your operating expenses and revenues. So we wait until generally towards the end of the fiscal year to see where our revenues have come in and where our expenditures currently are. So I can tell you that right now, as of, as of the end of August, you're at a hundred percent of your budgeted revenues. Which means that you're going to have excess revenues based off of the expenditures that are going to go out the door. Those excess revenues go into your reserve funds. And in order to meet that three point eight dollar figure for capital, I'm just suggesting that instead of sitting it in your reserve fund, you put it in your capital fund to fund those, those projects that we've presented this evening. You have made strategic decisions that have placed this municipality in a strong financial position.
We've worked very hard to get to here.
People will argue that that is not the case, but the reality is what we've presented this evening.
Do we need a motion?
I actually do need a motion on the capital. Yes.
So the motion would, we would.
The motion would be to approve the capital budget items as presented for the fiscal year 2023 budget.
Help me to that motion?
Please. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Now, just for clarification, that motion is for Stephanie to put it in the full budget packet. It still has to be voted on.
Yes, that is, that is correct. To clarify, just for the record, the only thing you're giving me authority this evening to do is to put it into the budget packet that will be presented in November, which will then be reviewed, advertised, and then presented formally in December. Okay?
So, yes, so if anyone has any more questions or concerns, we have time to address with our administration. I don't know. Would you like to?
On capital, we're done. There will be, so the next steps in the process. Again, I will be back in front of you in November. And there will be a formal presentation made to the, to all of the elected officials and to the public, which basically captures the budget. We've focused this evening on capital and general fund. There are other operating funds, streetlight fund, fire fund, highway aid fund, home fund, economic development fund, Marriott Park, Park Fund, Operating Reserve Fund. Library Fund. They will all be captured in your budget, in your budget presentation as well as the formal presentation to the public that we are, we are not recommending a tax increase moving into 2023. So we'll be back in November. I appreciate your time and all of your feedback and guidance getting us to this point in the budget process. And a big thank you to all of the directors for kind of packaging all of this information together. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of work. I really like it, but not all of them do. So it's, it's nice and it's nice to have some new faces here, kind of watch individuals step up and grow in their positions. It's something to be proud of. And then also just a big thank you to Angela Orr, who sits there, Angela Metz, excuse me again. Angela Metz, who sits there on Excel and kind of runs formulas and calculations and tries to keep up with me while I'm making her crazy. So I don't have anything else unless anyone needs anything else to, this evening. Thank you.